Planning Board is now in session. Good evening, everyone. First item on the agenda is public hearing continued from November 19th and December 17th for Zero Furman Ave major site plan approval. I'll turn it over to the Town Planner for an update on how we got to this point with this project. Karina.
The last time that Zero Furman Ave was physically at the Planning Board meeting was back in November 19th where the meeting was continued to December 17th. At that time, the applicant's team requested an extension to this meeting tonight. So, in the meantime, Beals and Thomas, the engineer for the applicant, submitted a revised set of plans addressing review comments that Fussin O'Neil had submitted back in November. With that, they provided updated plans, an updated stormwater report dated December 18th, some exhibit documents for the signage. They've also provided a couple of PowerPoint presentations that if the Planning Board doesn't mind, that they would like to present to demonstrate the lighting and the signs on the building for information. So, everything was distributed to the Town Departments, to the Planning Board. We did not receive any review comments back from any of the Town Departments. I believe in the meantime, and maybe even prior to the last meeting, you obtained your stormwater management permit?
That is correct.
Okay. And we're in receipt as of December 20th. Fussin O'Neil, what may be considered possibly the final review, there were three comments left which were items mostly to be determined by the Planning Board and their opinion on that. Which brings us here to Planning Board Meeting Number Three.
So, it sounds like the, although the time's been almost two months, good use has been made of that time between the applicant and the consultant. So, we'll turn it over to you. Good evening, gentlemen. Dan, introduce yourself and your team.
Sure. Dan Feeny from Beals and Thomas. I'm the project civil engineer.
Brian Levy from Beverage and Diamond. I'm the project attorney. And also with us tonight are a number of representatives from U-Haul, one of whom will be presenting tonight, Scott Chase. What you have in front of you are two things. One is the application for major site plan approval, and also in front of you is our request to waive the LID special permit. So, those are the two action items we have. As Karina mentioned, we've submitted revised plan December 18th, new civil plans, which I think have met virtually all of the, sort of closed all the holes that were left last time with Fussin O'Neil. And mainly, signage has now been submitted and updated stormwater. So, if I may, what we'd like to do is have Dan Feeny present on the civil side, focusing on the stormwater. And then Scott Chase from U-Haul present the signage package, which is, the hard copy is in your packages. And then behind you will be the PowerPoint. And to go along with that, we have, you would ask for pictures to show the impact of the lighting from the building on various neighborhoods. So, we've collected those pictures for you. We can talk about those views and how they would change with the proposed project. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Dan.
Okay. So, yeah, so we had submitted a response letter to the original Fussin O'Neil peer review letter. And within that, we detailed how we updated the plans, as well as the stormwater report, to address their comments. A lot of the comments dealt with the contents of the plan, making sure they were complete. There were some dimensions that they wanted added, in particular to a number of different existing features on the site, such as the parking space dimensions and setbacks and things like that. So, those plans were all updated for those things. The biggest stormwater piece that Fussin O'Neil had was the, we were proposing a CDS water quality treatment unit that was a five-foot diameter. So, it was the CDS five unit, based on using a faster time of concentration. When you use a faster time of concentration, there's more flow getting to the unit at the peak time, peak period of the storm. So, we upsized the unit to a six-foot diameter system. So, it's a CDS six unit. So, that addressed their comment regarding the stormwater piece. We also, so the outstanding comments, as mentioned, that Fussin O'Neil has, three of them, one of them is on the signage. So, we'll get into that a little bit later when Scott from U-Haul has a chance to present the proposed signage package. The second one is for a new development, a 10-foot side and rear yard planting buffer would be required. The existing site does not have the 10-foot buffer along the rear property line. It's Fussin O'Neil's opinion that based on Section 174-13K1 of zoning, because it's existing non-conforming, the landscaping is allowed to remain as is. Other than the last item, it's Fussin O'Neil's opinion that because we propose to disturb less than one acre, we're exempt from the LID regulations, which we agree with. But we are making an attempt to make the stormwater on the site better, in particular through the treatment of the stormwater and the water quality structure. The vast majority of the impervious area on the site will be directed through that water quality structure. It's sized for that. It's sized for the first one inch of runoff to the water quality structure, consistent with being in a critical area. The site eventually drains to the reservoir, comes through Southborough back into Framingham. And then in addition to that, the original design had a net reduction in impervious area of approximately 1,200 square feet. We've removed some additional pavement areas to get it up to approximately 3,700 square feet of pavement reduction. I can show you in a minute on the plan where we removed pavement. It was basically making some landscape islands bigger in order to do that. That'll help with runoff volumes, as well as slightly peak rates of runoff, the reduction in impervious area. We did look at the ability to put in basins to try to recharge more runoff. There's no room at the surface at the, you know, there is some space out in the front, but that's at a higher elevation. So, can't get the drainage from the back to the front and then back to the back to the discharge point. Previous developments at the site did look at doing subsurface recharge. They were, those proposals added a significant amount of impervious area. There was a building addition, and they were taking the front area and parking in that area. So, they were required to put that in to match peak flow rates, as well as to try to get as much recharge as they could. Based, it's hydraulic group C soils out there. They had, they had some test pit information out there. It's limited recharge that you would get from that. So, they did the best they could in that situation to get some to meet the requirement. They couldn't get enough to match runoff volumes. So, they got a waiver from the Conservation Commission through their stormwater permit that they filed for the project. And within that, it noted it was because of the poorly draining soils that they were granting that waiver. So, there's very limited opportunity to do recharge. And there's really not a lot of bang for your buck in terms of the amount of area you'd have to rip up to install that. You can only have so much of a depth of recharge with the poorly draining soils and still get it to drain within the 72 hours that's mandated by standard engineering design in the stormwater handbook. So, we went with trying to eliminate the pavement areas in those couple areas. I'll show you. So, on the plan, over in this area, we did remove the pavement over. In here, you can see the curb line extending this way. And then over here in Southborough, there's a couple of small landscape islands up in here, which we've carried through. So, this is in the area of the equipment shunting area, where the trucks are going to be shunted up in this area, the rental trucks. We did, are proposing to convert that, taking up the pavement, loam and seeding those areas. So, I've opened it up to the board for any questions on the stormwater, or any of the other items in the Fussin O'Neil letter.
Do we want to get the full presentation first, or break it out?
All in.
Full.
Okay.
All right. Okay, Scott?
Thank you. Good evening. My name's Scott Chase with U-Haul Company of Eastern Massachusetts. I would like to present to you the presentation on lighting to address questions from last meeting, if we could look at that first. I believe it's, yeah, there's two PowerPoints.
Yep, the lighting one.
Yes.
We just gotta get it.
So, this first slide that we're looking at shows the building from the front of the property, right at the beginning of the grass. And then the next slide shows the same picture, but back from Crossing Boulevard, from the off-ramp to Route 9. Keep in mind that inside has been, all the deconstruction demos been done. So, it's wide open. So, all that light is just traveling across the floor. Once we construct storage units, it will only be the outer hallway that has lighting, that you'll be able to see from outside.
Sorry, I'm just gonna get the presentation.
There's no light at all now. So, again, these are just-
We're gonna try to adjust the light so these show up a little better.
Okay.
How's that?
It's good from here.
Good, Terry?
When they start speaking, it's a little-
When they start speaking, when the people at the table start speaking, you can turn them back on. Although, you're gonna be speaking through it. So, go ahead.
Correct. So, we tried to take pictures from all the different angles to show the board how it looks currently. So, again, this is from the Route 9 off-ramp on the Crossing Boulevard. And what you're seeing is the bottom three floors are lit by existing lights in the ground that shine up on the building. And then you see the light from the upper floors, again, but those floors are wide open right now. If we could go to the next slide. This is the parking lot lighting. We see no need to change the existing lighting, as it's sufficient for the safety and security. So, it's unchanged. We're proposing to unchange that from the previous use. The light poles are 24 feet tall with 80 watt bulbs in them. And when this was operating as Genzyme, this building stayed lit 24/7, the same at the parking lot. If we go to the next slide, just shows the parking lot from a different angle, backside of the building. And then the next one comes from one of the neighborhoods it was concerned about. So, it's hard to see, but where that arrow is pointing, that is the building that we own. The one on the left that you see lit up pretty well over here, that is Sanofi. And that remains lit all night as well, seven days a week. And this picture doesn't show it, but some of the other ones show. The tree line is kind of taller than our building. So, most of the year, the foliage would block that. If we go to the next slide is from Kelly Lane neighborhood. Again, you can kind of see in this picture where the tree line is up above the building. And then the next slide is from the same spot, but looking to the left, you see the Sanofi building lit up, just to kind of show, you know, other corporate neighbors. And the next slide is from New York Ave, which is behind the property, all commercial business, commercial neighbors down there. And that is all the pictures we took of the nighttime lighting.
Scott, could you talk about the interior lighting and the corridors and how that's gonna operate?
Yes, absolutely. So, again, once storage units are constructed, there won't be a wide-open floor projecting light. There'll just be the outside hallway. All the lighting is on motion sensors. And when corridor is not in use, it would just be security lighting, limited security lighting on. And like I said before, you know, this building was lit all through the nights. We're actually gonna be reducing that.
Not to butt in, but on the first one, I think, so you're saying where it's all lit up at the top. I know it's completely gutted up there now. But you're saying at night is gonna be just a low-security light that would be on in there, and then as someone walked through, or-
Right. That's 24/7 is how we operate the lights. And what you're seeing there is from the Route 9 side. Like I said, the bottom is lit from lights projecting on the building.
Right.
The top two floors you see, because it's wide open. But we didn't change any lighting inside. We'd have no attentions to. We're using existing lightings, lighting the existing drop ceiling. So, by having the units constructed, it will just be that outside hallway, which on the Route 9 side, we would like to keep somewhat lit. But the rest of the building is just, as you walk down the hallway, they turn on. You leave, they, all but one shuts off for security.
Thank you.
How wide is that hallway?
Five feet.
So, we also see a wall on the, at the upper portion?
Correct. You would see a wall with storage doors, if you were able to see in there. Those windows are tinted. They're kind of like a smoke tent. So, during the day, it's hard to see in them. At night, with the lights on, you can.
And how many doors, or how many storage units across?
I don't have those plans. Maybe 30. I mean, it's approximate. We do have a set of preliminary as-built that we could get you that.
Are the doors, think of storage units, they have these bright orange doors. Is that what you're looking at there?
Yes, that's, U-Haul Orange is what we have, our doors, yes.
Was that the extent of the presentation then?
On the lighting, yes. I mean, we do have something on the signage. We're just trying to address the concerns on the lighting.
Let's get into the signage, and then we'll open it up to the board-
Okay.
-for any other comments.
We do have a presentation on the signage, too.
Can I just ask a quick question while you're pulling that up? Scott, in that picture where you have the two top floors are lit, the hallway is internal, or the hallway runs along the outer windows?
Right now, there's no hallways. But there would be a five-foot hallway in between the windows and the first set of rooms.
So, the hallway would be-
On the perimeter?
Correct.
So, the hallway's on the perimeter?
Correct.
So, that's what lights up?
Correct.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. So, what we have here is the proposed imaging of the building. This is showing the entire building. Obviously, there's only a small piece of it that's in Southborough that we'll discuss. But we wanted to show you the whole project. So, this would be as the same view of the first presentation. This would be the view from Route 9 or from the Crossing Boulevard. In the top right is existing sign we intend to utilize. And this yours, storage place across the top, again, is our proposed signage for that portion of the building, which is in Framingham. The lower portion, you see the different colors on the windows. These are actually decals that cover the windows. We wanted to make sure that we, I guess, explain that to you. Right now, if you go back and look at the pictures on the lighting, you'll see that the bottom two floors are just, it seems like they have black tint on the windows. And the third has nothing. This is what we would like to do, is normally we would paint a building. There's not much to paint on this building. So, that's what we propose to put decals up on those. The next slide shows the west elevation of the building. This is the entrance to the showroom. This is in Southborough. And what we propose here is the U-Haul center sign on the building is 45 square foot. And we have the monument side, which is at, monument sign, which is at the end of this presentation. One other thing that this shows is lifestyle graphic on the corner. And there's one in the front. And I'd like to just explain that a little bit. In other communities, we've had success installing these lifestyle graphics. They're meant to show activities and individuals from the community, so we can fit in with the community. We're asking that you not consider them signs. And we've had some luck with other communities with this, because there's nothing on it that says U-Haul, no advertising. You know, it would be something like maybe people riding bikes on the Bay Circuit Trail on the Southborough side, and maybe a college kid with an FSU sweatshirt on the other side. But it's really meant for us to just become involved in the community. I mean, they have no specific reference to at all the businesses U-Haul. They not call attention to our service or products. They wouldn't advertise in any way. We would like your feedback on, you know, if there's something that we could do to tie into the community and be able to utilize those lifestyle graphics. On the next slide is the east elevation, which is entirely in Framingham. But again, we wanted to show you the whole scope of the project here. We're proposing a couple more of those lifestyle graphics on that side. The next slide is the north elevation, which is the rear of the building. Again, any signage that we're proposing is in Framingham. And on the next slide is the southwest elevation, again, showing the front from a different angle and how it would look. Again, these are just examples. They're not what we're proposing to put there. There's another picture, I'm sorry, actually, at the back of the building, the north elevation from a further distance. But, and on the last page shows the signage that we proposed, the monument sign and the sign on the building, which are within the bylaws. which are within the bylaws.
So to summarize, in Southborough, there's the monument sign, which does meet the 75 square foot dimensional requirement. There's also the U-Haul sign, wall sign over the door of the retail center.
Correct.
And that is 45 square feet, so that meets the wall signage, uh, dimensional requirement of 50 square feet. So what's really on the table is your, our, your, we'd like to get your feedback on the, uh, the lifestyle artwork proposed for the building. Um, and then the balance of the signage is in Framingham, but obviously you want to see the whole thing. The, the sign that's up at the, in the front of the building, up in the top right corner, that wall sign, that's a, that's a Framingham wall sign. So that's sort of the, the main signage in Framingham, plus we would ask them for the lifestyle piece as well. But we're also, we're, we're, we're showing this to you first, we have not shown this to Framingham yet. We wanted to get your feedback first.
Is that it?
We're ready.
Okay. Um, open it up to the planning board, Mr. Mills. And this would be, uh, questions and comments on, um, the three pieces, the drainage, the lighting, and the signage.
So, uh, first of all, thank you, appreciate it. One of these things I can finally understand, so you did a great job putting it in layman's terms. A couple of questions, so, um, Framingham has not approved this at all then?
Correct.
Correct, they, have they seen it?
They have not.
Have not seen it, okay. So the, the covering on the outside of the, the lower windows, um, to my surprise, I like it. I think it looks appealing, it looks nice, and updates the building from what it's been, um, for the last number of years. Any thought to wrapping that around to the, the east and west sides?
That discussion hasn't come up. I mean, basically, this is the preliminary plan that our department came up with on it.
So, and then just folding over the, the graphic, trying to extend it, see what it looked like on my pay-per-view. I think that makes it, for me, um, more palatable for the lifestyle.
Mm-hmm.
We could definitely look at that.
And then, um, the other piece is the, uh, the Your Storage Place on top. My concern, I think I mentioned this the first time, was, you know, using the lighting on the inside to act like another sign. So it looks like this might, depending, you know, I was trying to gauge where that Your Storage Place would fit on what was up there before. It looks like it would be right where the lighted rows are, so if I'm, I'm?
It is on the fifth floor, correct.
So that when it's lit up at night, you're going to see that, that's going to glow through or like a shadow sign the whole time. Is that right?
Yes. Could be a shadow, yes.
So I, I mean?
Well, I'm sorry, sir. Um, the, those, the word, the letters aren't lit?
No.
Yeah.
No, and they're not transparent, but there may be a shadow, like you're saying, if it's?
Right, so everything's lit behind it, then it looks like a gray sign almost at night, I'm guessing.
Yeah, I, I don't know how that's going to work. I mean, if it's, if it's not lit, maybe you're not even going to see it at all? I mean, maybe you'll see the outline, I, I don't know.
Well, it's lit inside, my point is if it's lit inside and it's on the outside of the windows?
Yeah, but I don't think there's a blocking behind it, I'm just not sure.
Okay, so I guess I'd like to know more on that. So, and you said before it was lit 24/7, so, um, I don't know how we could get like a gra, I'd be curious what it would look like without the motion sensors on, or what you think the security light would look like, um, just at night. I don't know if you can?
I mean, we could probably, you know, that was with every light on in the building.
Right, I understand.
We could shut some down and, and make our best guess of what we think, you know. Again, without the walls there is kind of tough, because the light from the whole floor is shining through.
Okay. So I, I mean, if there's any way to get an idea of just what it might look like in some way? And it, it sounded like you were going to have different lighting at night on the Route 9 side of the building compared to the rest of the building?
We would like to have, the Route 9 side, there's all commercial neighbors. I mean, we'd like to have the light, maybe more security lights there than we would have in other halls, just to kind of display the building. I mean, it does sit away back off of Route 9. That, that is our wish, yes.
So internally, not externally?
Correct, just having that one hallway on that side, maybe half lit instead of having two security lights. You know, not fully lit as it would be if somebody was in there, but...
So, um...
So I think what we're talking about is sort of enhancing the security lighting on that front corridor that faces Route 9.
It would be more of just having more security lights, you know, if someone, if no one's in that corridor and the lights are off from the motion sensor, we would like to have a few more lights than we would have in the other hallways.
I get it. Again, almost acting like a sign. In my view. Is my words. So I, I don't, I mean, I, I think it would be best to try to make it as continuous as possible for the building, is my personal preference, hence, like even wrapping the, the colored?
Decals.
Decals around to both sides, even though I have no say on Framingham. I think it would look good overall for the building. Uh, the only other thing I know, Fussin' O'Neill said that, uh, I think, was it additional, um, screening or?
Landscape buffering?
Yeah, landscape buffering. In lieu of that, um, have you, I don't think there's a flagpole on that property, is there?
There is, there's three of them.
There's three? In the front?
On the side by the showroom entrance in the Southborough side.
Okay. And lit?
Yes.
Underneath?
Yep.
Okay.
Can, if I could just ask for clarification, uh, back on the, the part of the sign that says Your Storage Place. What is it that you're aiming for? You do not want that to be lit up at night, or you don't want the letters, or what is it that you're?
So I, I guess I would be concerned that if it's lit up, um, that entire row is lit up more at night.
Yes.
With the, I mean, naturally, I would think that light behind that, you're going to have Your Storage Place and the waves would block out any light coming through, so it's going to look like, you know, it's going to be a backlit sign, basically.
All right.
Personally, I would think that it would, I would like to see it not happen like that.
Okay.
Maybe you still have it, maybe you light the floor above it and the floor below it, or whatever.
So you'd, you'd prefer to see that portion unlit?
Correct.
Okay, got it.
There is some space above the fifth floor windows, looking at some of the pictures where it's in the ceiling space, however, it's not lit. I don't think it would be a big deal to move that up to that space.
Yeah.
That's certainly not something we considered. I don't think, you know, having that hallway light behind it is going to give it that backlit LED, you know, like you see some signs, but I understand your concern with it, we could move it up.
I'm good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Jenks?
Where's the, uh, Southborough-Framingham line on this?
So it's just about, uh, somewhere on the left side, nope, if you go back?
Go back?
Yep.
It's right along here, yeah. So, about how many windows is in there?
Yeah, that's, that's it, it's like about 20.
Yeah, so it doesn't, the Your Storage Place isn't in there, but this corner of the building is.
Okay, so that's all Framingham?
Correct.
Take a, take a guess, which is a more heavily regulated sign, Framingham or Southborough's?
I believe Southborough, and maybe you can help me with that.
Yeah, you know. If we keep talking, let me check.
How, end a wave to the right-hand end, how long is that?
Let me see if it says in here. So it looks like the squiggly line is 32 feet wide, just above two feet tall, two and quarter feet tall.
Times two or?
Yeah, two feet tall, 32 feet long, and that's each squiggly.
Okay.
The Your Storage Place decal is 27 and a half feet wide.
To answer your question, I think the Southborough is more restrictive on the wall signage.
Okay.
Mr. Jenks and, uh, the rest of the board, I think these are wonderful questions, and it, and it's great for the people to be, uh, made aware of this, but as we've, we all know, our jurisdiction ends at the town line. So it's, I think it's very important that these questions are asked to get the full picture, and I compliment you on giving us the full picture. But we must remind ourselves that our jurisdiction ends at the town line.
The decals, um, those translucent, can, can you see through those, or are they solid block?
Those are non-transparent.
So will they also block light?
The lower ones, yes. The, the lower three panels that you see, yes.
So other than the outside lighting, uh, that's a dark wall?
Correct.
What are the, what are your operational hours?
There's 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Monday through Thursday and Saturday. Or 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM on Fridays, and 9:00 to 5:00 on Sundays.
The lighting hours, however, you mentioned were 24/7.
We talking interior or exterior?
I, I assumed you meant interior.
Um, I'm not sure which statement I made that you're referring to, but exterior, we plan on leaving the parking lot lights on round the clock for security, which they had been on before.
Maybe it was exterior then.
It may be. Interior, anytime of the day, the lights are not on unless someone's in the hallway. There's only minimal security lights.
So in other words, everything is motion-activated, all the interior lights?
For what it's worth, my comment on the life-size graphic thing, I like them. I don't know if you have any of them in Southborough, do you?
We do, on the left of the front, there's one you see, I mean, that, the example says new life, but like I said, we were thinking, you know?
Both that, both the previous one and that, whatever, in Southborough.
I like those, I would hesitate not to classify them as signs. Uh, I guess, my thinking is if we say they're not signs, then we have no jurisdiction. That's like painting the color of the building.
If you'd like, I'll read the section.
Yeah, great.
And then politely disagree. There's a set of, I, I was on, this, uh, the sign, 174-11, uh, in our code is called signs. And, um, it was amended in 1986 and again in, um, 2000. And I was on the board both times, but the one, the amendments, the amendment in, um, or the revision in the year 2000 was a major revision to the signed bylaw. There was quite a bit of work that went into it. And, um, it really took into account the more modern signs that pretty much weren't around in the 80s and before that. So there's a set of definitions here, Section B, it says sign. Uh, they have a definition for roof sign, they have a definition for standing sign, temporary signs, traffic signs, trailer or vehicle signs, wall signs, window sign. But just the definition of sign, says any letter, word, symbol, drawing, picture, design, device, article, or object that advertises, calls attention to, or indicates any premises, persons, premiseses, persons, products, businesses, or activities. Or that conveys or is intended to convey any message, whatever, the nature of the material and manner of composition or construction. So, and then it talks about historical signs don't, don't count. So, and this board hasn't had, uh, a whole lot of, um, recent experience with, you know, other than ordinary signs. But, you know, back in the 80s, the 90s, and the early 2000s, there was, the, the board was busy with, um, different types of signs. And it's my memory that, that that, uh, those pictures, uh, whether they're words or just pictures, are signs. We had, and I, I can't remember the, uh, the specific project, but there was one project where it was similar to the, the banner you have on the front, um, which for U-Haul, I think is unique, or for this building is unique. But there was a, an, uh, another, it was a global corporation, and they had their name. And as part of their name and their logo, the way the, the letters were, and the font, and that type of thing, was a strip of coloring that was always associated with those, with the word. And the building inspector, the zoning enforcement officer at the time, and I think the ZBA and the planning board agreed that the square footage of that colored strip was included in the count for the sign.
So, exactly right, and as you can see on this document, we included the square footage of the orange lines that are on either side of Your Storage Place. That's all in Framingham, that's not your jurisdiction. So the question really is the, 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 the lifestyle, um, pictures that are in, uh, Southborough. That's really what's on the table tonight.
I know you've asked us to not consider them a sign, but in my experience, in my read of this, I believe that they would be considered a, a sign.
So I guess the only, I, I hear you loud and clear.
But that's, I'm just one member of the board.
I, I hear you, and I do want to hear from Mr. Mills and everybody on, on those signs. But the question is, uh, that was put into the bylaw in 2000, right? It's 18 years later, and, um, we all know, we've all spent a lot of time around zoning boards and planning boards, and over time, the way provisions are interpret, interpreted change. And the question is whether this is sort of out of keeping, uh, in any way with what we're trying to do here, and whether you must consider this to be a sign. We're trying to say, well, we're not really advertising U-Haul by putting a picture of a kid from Framingham State with a T-shirt that says Framingham State on it, you know, or the Framingham State softball team, or whatever it is on the building. It's connecting the building to the community in a nice way. So the question is whether there's room for interpreting those words. And you can interpret them however you wish, um, but there's, is there room for interpreting them in that way so that they can be on the building?
And I'd just like to clarify?
There's also a relief, if the board does determine that it's a sign, then you can get a variance from the zoning board of appeals. That's within our bylaw also.
Right.
So it'd be an extra step for you, but let's see how, uh, let's see how, what the other members feel. And I've asked, I'm not sure, Karina, did you get to the building inspector about this? We haven't done that yet. The zoning, I would ask the zoning enforcement officer to render an opinion relative to what you're proposing compared to the signed bylaw.
Okay, and just to clarify, the, the images on, the pictures in front of you are just examples. We could possibly, you know, get you some other examples, like in Worcester, there's one, there's a popular bike trail. We could possibly, you know, get you some other examples, like in Worcester, there's one, there's a popular bike trail, uh, where we just took a picture of people riding bikes on this trail and that's all that is on this lifestyle graphic on that building. So like I said, it's not like we're looking to advertise on it, just tie into the community. So we would seek your feedback if we were to get approval on this, but, you know, our thoughts were, you know, maybe kids playing soccer in nine-eleven field, maybe, you know, people biking on one of the trails in town, you know, but that's it. It's not rent here, you know, anything like that.
Right. We, I don't think we would get into what the message, if it's, if it's a word, symbol, drawing, picture, design, device. If we consider whatever you're going to put there to be that, then it's considered within the definition of a sign. Now, there's also, at the beginning of the code, it says the purpose of the signed bylaw. And number two says preserving for the present and future inhabitants the natural, architectural, and historical assets and other qualities which distinguish the town as a highly desirable community. So if you prevail, or if, regardless of how you prevail with, with these, with the pictures or the community outreach, we would respectfully ask that this, that if you do have a sign and it's in Framingham, that it doesn't show a Framingham kid scoring a goal against South Borough kid.
Well, we're here first. We can do it the other way around.
Back to Mr. Jenks.
We will volunteer that that is a permit condition.
So if it's, if it's not a sign, you could put them, you could wrap the building. You could put them all the way around the building?
I mean, that's the logical extension of that argument, but we're not, we're not going there.
If the building were in South Borough.
We're not going there.
Well.
That's the lawyer's hypothetical horrible, but we're not going there.
But you may not be here five years from now.
Understood.
That's pretty good. I give you five years more of your job. I think they are signs. I, I think that's a broad enough definition that, that it includes signs. I, I think you can go anywhere with these things. I, I know that it's not advertising anything now, but, uh, the next picture could be, picture of a Nike sneaker or something that doesn't have the words, but has an image that is clearly a product image.
So, so with all due respect, I, I, I think that that can easily be resolved by the, by the applicant agreeing to, you know, running the, the, the picture by the town planner, for example, if it's ever going to get changed and making sure that the town is in agreement with the picture.
Yeah, that was, that was kind of the other side of the coin that I was going to mention and it is that I don't know that you said the town planner, but I, I don't know if this board wants to review every proposal for every window, every year. And, and admittedly, at this point, I'm thinking more in terms of a building that is completely within South Borough and what precedent it would set if we classified these as non-signs. Admittedly, I haven't put any more thought into this than what's been represented here tonight. But my inclination at this point would be to call it a sign. I think that's all the questions I had on that. On the drainage, um, are there any areas of planting that you're doing?
We are proposing, um, some landscaping, some trees. Um, it's within the Framingham portion of the property. So I can show you on the plan. This, um, this was the original area of impervious area that was coming out. So again, the town line is located here, so within Framingham. Um, so there is proposed landscaping going on in that area. Uh, we haven't proposed any landscaping elsewhere on the site.
Could you, are there places where you could do planting?
There are some limited areas, I think, you know, out in the front. There's areas where plantings can go in. There is the underground basement here, so obviously outside of that footprint. You have a pretty, um, natural tree line, um, within the western slope coming down from the parking lot. The existing conditions plan here shows all the existing trees, um, that are out in that area. So there's, you know, not a lot of value, I don't think, in doing it in the perimeter. I think it's pretty well screened on that side. You know, as you get along the, um, the northern property line, it's a very narrow strip there. You probably have, uh, of maybe a little bit under five feet from the edge of the pavement to the property line.
You, you mentioned the, um, value or being very little, little value because it couldn't be seen. We're, we're, uh, we're being taught by our open space people that, um, there's value in planting that you can't see in terms of, um, insect and wildlife, um, bees and it's, uh, it's an important topic with the open space people now and, and, uh, we just went through a project where, um, we did, we got quite involved in that. And that, that's really why I was asking not, not because of the beautification of the site.
Yeah, I mean, within, within South Borough, there are trees within the existing parking islands. We are, you know, making this parking island much larger, so that might be a logical place to, to include a little bit of landscaping up in that area.
Did we cover snow storage?
We did. Uh, there are designated areas for snow storage, um, in this area.
More interested in South Borough for that.
Okay. Um, you know, there is snow storage proposed. Um, actually, it's, a lot of the snow storage is in Framingham just because there's more space. Uh, we have the vehicle shunting area, um, within South Borough. Um, and it has to be that way per the code. So in order to, um, get a lot of the turning movements in, there's not as much room to do snow storage in, in South Borough. But it's one parking lot, um, so the, the snow will be plowed across the municipal line into the snow storage areas in Framingham.
In the confines of that drawing, the South Borough portion, are there any other buildings? Do you have any neighbors?
See if it shows up on the existing conditions plan. Yeah, I'm not sure if, if at the bottom of the hill here, um, if the building, I think, is located in Framingham down here. There's a dilapidated garage shown, um, over here. Um, there's nothing. It's a wetland system. Down at the base, there's a, there's a discontinued road, um, down in this area. And then you got Boston Post Road over here, so.
Actually, Mr. Jenks, if you look behind you, there's a little locus overhead.
Yeah, actually, that's helpful.
Oh, yeah. So up in here.
That's all commercial.
That's all commercial.
Yeah.
Some houses here and, what about up on Carriage Hill? Is there a view of the site?
I think we took all of the views that were to be taken.
I think one of the slides showed that.
Yeah, I thought one did.
Yeah, there was, there was one from William Onthank Lane and one from Austin Kelly Lane.
Now, let's not Carriage Hill.
And New York Avenue.
And then New York Avenue.
I thought when you spoke, you said it was at the Carriage Hill. It looked like the top of Carriage Hill, the, the slide.
Let's take a look.
No, not, not there. Um, no.
Okay. Guess not.
Have you, have you heard from any neighbors?
No. Have, have you?
Have you talked to any neighbors?
No.
Um, I think that's it for me.
Thank you. Mrs. Luttrell.
Thank you. Um, when was this building built?
It began, it was first built, I think, in nineteen sixty? Sixty-eight. And that was the original three floors. Um, actually, it was an addition in the eighties.
And then there was, then the other pieces were added on.
In, in the eighties?
Eighty-seven, the top two floors were added and the elevator shaft on the back side.
So there's so many permits and variances that, that.
Right.
And I'm trying to figure out when was what. Cause there was another height variance that was issued in twenty thirteen, but if it was already five stories, why would you get another variance?
No, it was.
Well, I was going to say, I think you would need, if you were going to expand a building, you would need the variance for the expansion of the building as well as the.
Right. There was one issued in nineteen eighty-three, a height variance, and then the parking spaces, nine feet instead of nine and a half. And then, so if it was expanded in nineteen eighty-seven and became five stories?
Correct.
Then another variance was issued in twenty thirteen for height?
Yeah, that, that was never built.
I think that was just proposed by the previous owner.
There was a proposal to expand the existing building, um, put parking out in the front of the site as well as parking across the street.
Oh, okay.
So I think it was a, about a seventy thousand square foot building expansion that was proposed but never built.
Okay. Um, also back in nineteen eighty-five, I guess the zoning was changed on it and there was a covenant filed, the registry of deeds, that, um, that lot twenty-five, um, there would be a conservation restriction placed on it.
So which is lot, do you know what, twenty-five on the plane?
Yeah, it's that little triangle. It's residentially zoned. And I think it was.
Is that on the, is that on the locus?
Yeah, somewhere.
I don't think.
I'm not a hundred percent sure, but it might be down.
Yeah, it's not on the project site.
Yeah, it's.
It's off the west side of the property. They're trying to move down the Route Thirty.
It's on the other side of that land, the Paper Street Lamb, Lamb Hill Road.
Well, it was purchased at the same time as this lot changed ownership. I was wondering if a CR was going to be placed on it.
So there's no proposal to do that. Um, there's no proposal to do any work there either at this time. So there are actually multiple parcels that make up the land that's owned by Amerco. So if in the future there's something that is percolating up, we can certainly come back and revisit that with the board, but we're not looking to do any work there under this, under this particular project. I think it is entirely. But I, I don't, I shouldn't say. I'm, I'm really not sure. It looks to be.
Mrs. Luttrell, um, this was brought up at the November meeting by me because, again, I was on the board when that, uh, the previous, or whoever the owner was at the time agreed that, um, the triangle was an important, uh, part of the neighborhood. That, and, and at the time, the project was just at the top of the hill. There was no interest in the wooded area or the, uh, field that's right at the tip of the triangle. And at that time, the owners said they had no problem putting a restriction on any future, uh, construction there and that it would remain wooded and, um, there'd be nothing built there. So I brought that up in November and I asked you to look into it and, um, consider doing the same thing.
Um, I believe what happened in November was the question was asked, is there a restriction? And I did research it and I didn't find a restriction. Um, I didn't know that we were being asked to offer up a, a restriction.
It would be nice.
Um, understood. Um, so we, we will definitely consider that.
Okay. The other, um, thing is the, um, what's the planting material that's being used in the landscape areas that are?
So the, um, there's, um, some red maple deciduous trees as well as a flowering dogwood.
In, in South Borough? I don't think we get any trees.
We can, we can also look at that, um, you know, originally, this is where we were adding the landscape area. It made sense, um, to put it in over there, but since we've added some landscape area in South Borough, we can look at that as well.
Okay. And I prefer natives in landscaped areas. There's been a lot of research on the importance of natives. In the, um, other question, that western slope that's, um, has been left wooded, is there any, um, is there any protection there that precludes anything from being chopped down there in the future?
No, I think you're talking just off the edge of the, of our development, this, this area.
Yeah.
Um, we're not proposing any development there. There's actually a pretty good slope.
It's a very steep slope.
Yeah.
You know, if you look at the existing conditions plan, uh, the edge of pavement running up here, you can see the, the contours. You know, it, they're, they are one-foot contours, so, uh, it looks steeper than it is, but it's still steep. You know, that's a significant drop-off. So there's no plans, and that's what, when I was talking about the stormwater earlier, there's no opportunity to do any stormwater on that slope, so.
So could that be designated as open space?
I, open space in terms of, you know, like a, a conservation restriction or just open space in terms of?
No, just designated as open space.
On the plan?
On the plans and say that it can't be.
We'll have to look at that. We'll have to look at that.
Seeing as the, we don't have the landscape buffers and the, um, the landscaping in the, uh, parking lot isn't what would be required now under our bylaws. So that would, I think, mitigate that for me anyway. And Framingham gets open space and they get all the trees, they get the tax revenue. We get, you removed a tree in parking that doesn't generate much revenue. Oh, and the last thing, those, uh, pictures, I think the chairman's right that they are signs, it's my, in my opinion. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Back to Mr. Mills.
Thank you. Uh, one question I forgot. Uh, I know that last time I asked about the, the flow of traffic as it comes in the front and the parking for people who are getting boxes and everything and to ask if you could look at it again for, for safety concerns on things moved. Did that change at all?
We haven't changed the, um, the general.
We haven't changed the, um, the general flow of traffic. If you could refresh me on your concern with the, the, the flow of the traffic?
Yeah, so I, I've rented before the U-Haul in Fram, uh, Natick, I think it is, and been there at night. It's very busy. People are driving around in trucks that they're not used to, as I'm sure you can, uh, attest to, right? And it flow, the flow is good in the fact that you go around one way and you come out. The parking's all up in front, so the people going by with the trucks and everything, you don't, you're not really interacting with people going in to just get boxes, which there were, I was surprised that there were a lot of people going there. I was just going for a trailer. Not that you need my rental history, but, um, you know, so my concern is if the trucks, people renting, you know, trailers and everything are going right by where people are parking to get boxes and it's a busy area at night, especially that's when I was picking up and dropping off. Just wanna make sure that the safety of the customers going in and out of the office when you have people driving around with things they're not used to driving, that it's well lit or we do as much as we can to make it so that they don't have to cross in front of necessarily, um, the, the flow of traffic. I mean, if you had like, yeah, that, that was my concern.
Yeah, so the anticipation is, is that, um, the parking out, um, in front of the building here, um, will be-
Isn't that the back?
I'm sorry, yeah, the, the back of the building with where the, the entries are. So the entry to the, uh, retail space is in this area, um, and the entry to, um, the general, um, storage units, um, is over on this side of the building. And there's also two vehicular doors over here. So people who are using the self-storage facility, are gonna be parked, uh, within the self, self-storage parking area located, um, in this general area. Um, the retail people are gonna be parked in this general area, so, and then the, the vehicle rental people are gonna be coming, back in this area and the trucks are back in this area. So there is a separation, certainly for the self-storage, um, users.
So all that parking then on the south side that is used for the, all that?
Yeah.
Is that gonna be used or are you gonna fill that in?
It's sort of overflow parking. Um, you know, there might be times when it's needed. It's not gonna be the primary parking that people use.
Is there gonna be a walkway or anything to keep them off the road?
We're not proposing a walkway because again, I don't think you're going to get, um, a lot of usage out of that area. You know, primarily people are gonna park back behind the building because it's closest to the entries. Um, there's a decent slope that comes up here as well. So I think it just, you know, it functions a little bit better for the majority of parking. You know, we can look at adding a sidewalk, but it, it's, you know, like I said, I don't anticipate there being a lot of, um, parking in that area. It would really take a, a busy day for that to happen.
So, again, I think my, my concern is that area specifically. And if people at night are parking there, especially on the west side, having to cross over in front of people who are leaving in new rental trucks that, you know, they might never have driven before and they're just getting used to adjusting mirrors and everything and like I, I think we should focus in it's, I, I appreciate you don't think it's not gonna happen a lot, but it's our responsibility as a planning board to do what we can to make it as safe as possible. So to, I think that should be reviewed, the west side parking in that lower unit.
Will do. Uh, Mr. Mills, comment on the, uh, the community photographs?
Oh, yeah. I definitely, I agree with the chairman. And you don't want me to go any further than that.
I thought maybe we could get one.
So, Mr. Chase, uh, thank you, uh, for an excellent presentation. A lot, you, you headed off a lot of the questions with your presentation, especially the lighting. I've had, uh, concerns in that neighborhood about, you know, the blend of residential and commercial stuff on Route nine and on the other side, you know, on, on, um, the other side of Route nine. And you're right in, you're the closest to the neighborhoods, residential neighborhoods. So maybe when you come back, you can have a, maybe show us a picture from Carriage Hill.
Absolutely.
Cause that's way up there. I was up there this afternoon, uh, and on the, on the north edge, you, you're right. It's, uh, it's the top of the world there and there's a guardrail across the back on the north. But there's two gates and on the other side of the gate, uh, is, look like, uh, crushed stone, riprap. Is that to manage the drainage off the site down that steep hill?
No, it's, it's curved back there. It's curved back in that area and the grade pitches back into the site, um, if you look at the grades. I, I, yeah.
There's two, um, gates. They're, they're, you know, like steel metal swing gates.
You're talking about near the, on the east side, closest to where the other office building is?
No.
The backside-
It's in the back.
Backside of the parking lot.
Yeah.
It's right here.
Previous owner using the whole parking lot had to push somewhere. I mean, we're gonna keep everything.
But there's, there's also, uh, in, at both locations, there's good-sized, uh, stone riprap. Maybe when you come back, you can tell us what that's all about.
I'll, I'll go out there and look at it, um, and see if I can figure out a reason why it would be there. But, you know, based on the topography out there, the, um, high point is sort of at the back edge of the curb and it drains back into the site to the catch basin's onsite. So I, it, it, it shouldn't be for stormwater purposes. I think, you know, the snow removal might be a good guess that they were dumping snow back behind there. I don't know if they had an agreement with the, the abiding property owner or not to do that, but... That would be like, the gates would make sense then.
The first appearance was that the gate led, would lead to a stabilized, uh, because it was, you know, the crushed stone there.
Yeah.
It was stabilized for vehicles to go through the gate and go somewhere.
But there's nowhere to go.
But when you look on the other side of that, that guardrail?
Yeah.
It's, you can't, you couldn't even walk it. It's so steep. It's incredibly steep. So, just curious about that. Uh, if you... If you can't figure out what, what they're for or they don't benefit or if they're, any, pose any type of a detriment to the site, maybe you'd consider taking them, taking them down and putting the guardrail there so you'd have complete protection across that, the back.
I'm, I'm looking at the existing conditions plan and there is a, a note on here on the existing conditions, which the survey was done by another company that says slope made, EXC number ten. So I'm wondering if it's almost an easement to the abiding property owner to maintain the slope in some form or fashion, but I'll, I'll look at that.
Okay.
You know?
Sure. And then as far, Mr. Jenks brought up the, the neighbors and again, if you're looking on the north and look over that guardrail, you can look down at the roof, way down at the roof of the, the building in Framingham. And it's so steep, I couldn't even see the cars that were parked along the, the bottom of the hill. And then to the west, um, there, there, again, way down the hill, you can see, and you can see it in that, um, locus, the rooftop of a, of a home. And then you mentioned the garage that was next to it that looked like it was all overgrown. But other than that, there's, there was, um, it, it seems like the site is so isolated, um, from the neighbors other than visual. So... I agree, uh, that the, have we already covered the lid? Did we rule on that?
No.
No.
I think based on what you were proposing, um, that the lid, uh, would be under consideration for, uh, you know, for waving, especially if you were to come back with, um, consideration on the triangle, because that's a, uh, significant green space in that neighborhood. The reason it was a concern years ago was that it, across the street from that is a residential neighborhood. And to have that changed would be a big impact on the streetscape and the neighbors. I think at one time, when they were expanding that, uh, intersection, it was really expanded. I, I think it was only like, at one point, it was only two lanes. And now I think it's like up to five or six lanes. It's two turning lanes, one, one eastbound lane and might be two, two westbound lanes turning. So they cut down a lot of trees. They big-time widened that intersection. And they used the triangle for, um, like a storage yard for, uh, materials, gravel and guardrails and curbing. I guess the previous owner allowed them to do that. And there was concern at the time that because it's Route thirty, that, uh, state may, um, have interest in buying or taking that piece, uh, and then putting something there, which would change the, the, uh, the appearance and the, the whole flavor of that, that part of the neighborhood. So it's important. That triangle is important to the-
Mr. Chairman, just so I understand exactly what you're saying, I'm looking at the, um, the Altup Plan Sheet AL two.
Mm-hmm.
And are you referring to what's labeled as, um, Lot D?
Parcel five, I think?
Is that a parcel five? Is that what you're referring to when you say the triangle?
Yeah, it's, it's from the, the western edge of your parking lot, of your driveway.
And then a butts, Route thirty, correct?
And then down, down to Boston Road and down to Furman Ave. It's a triangle, the whole thing.
Are you talking about this triangle or the, this area here?
All the way up to there. Which would include the woods on the steep slope, the stream at the bottom of the slope, the wet, the little wetland near the stream, and then the field that's at the tip of the, uh, triangle.
It's a very large area. I hear you.
Okay. It was done before and we, I think at the last meeting, we asked you to consider it. We're still, still asking.
We have no plans of doing anything on that land. Is it possible to have a condition of site plan approval saying that we would not build on it without further, I mean, we, we have no intentions of it. And I'm not an attorney.
Well, that's implied anyways if, if-
If it goes to a conservation, I mean, I guess, uh, Brian can fill me in later on what the difference would be, but I just wanna know what our options are to make you feel comfortable that we're not gonna do anything with that land that's gonna deteriorate the neighborhood, but without necessarily writing it as conservation forever.
You've made yourself clear. You've heard what you had to say. We have to consider, have to talk to the client.
Sure.
It's a, it's a very large chunk of land to put a CR on.
We just did one on Northborough Road.
I, I, I hear you.
Yeah, I think that's it for right now, uh, for me. So open it up to the public. Any questions or comments? Please introduce yourself, Tim.
Tim Lit, Woodland Road. Uh, I'm not a neighbor, but I am a resident. My reading on the lifestyle graphics is it's definitely a sign. Uh, I'm not an attorney, but I've read a whole bunch of, of things and the plain language reading of, of what the chairman said is, you know, it's a picture. It draws attention to the building. It's a sign. It looks to me like a billboard and, um, I drive by often enough. I am not a fan.
Anyone else? Any questions or comments? So the, um, approval period ends on Friday, the eleventh. So, um, our next planning board meeting is on, uh, January twenty-eighth. And, um, we have room at seven o'clock, which is the prime time, for you to come back if that's what you wanna do.
So that's, uh, four weeks from tonight.
Three weeks from tonight.
Three weeks.
Three weeks, three weeks.
Now... You still have to go to Framingham? You haven't done anything in Framingham yet?
We did go for an initial session to sort of show them the site plan. We have on the docket, we're on their docket for this coming Thursday night. I need to talk to my team in view of what's happened here tonight, whether we are going to keep that date or whether we are gonna continue that date. I don't know the answer to that yet. To me, the concern here is, um, we need to get you plans, what, at least eight days in advance, seven days in advance? So if we're on the twenty-eighth, we have to file by when?
Seven days ahead so that the planning board has a chance to review and that the public has access.
Right.
But sooner if Fussin' O'Neill has to re-review if there's any
Right.
relatively significant changes to the plan.
So, can we agree at this point that we don't need any more Fussin' O'Neill?
I mean, I think from what I heard tonight, the, the plan changes are potentially a sidewalk being added, um, some additional landscaping, um... The possibl, well, I mean, I, it wouldn't be a, it would just be a note on the plans, I guess, if there was any consideration of either an open space area or a conservation restriction area.
Sure, that's not an engineering issue.
Yeah.
So can we agree that we don't need to go back to periodue again?
But that's about it, right? I was gonna look into the, to the slope on the northern side and, 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 you know, just research why those gates are there and why the riprap might be there, um, see if we can come up with that. But I don't think there's anything in that list, um, that would have to go through Fussin' O'Neill review unless the board disagrees.
Yeah, I think the area I'm talking about too, you might wanna think about getting rid of the parking on the west side. I don't know if that's gonna-
Yeah, that's a very important area.
-trigger something for Fussin' O'Neill, but, or changing it somehow, so... Again, my concern is people walking across at night over there, cutting in front of big trucks with inexperienced drivers going-
Do you want me to outside to kinda go over that so I can better understand what your concerns are?
I mean, I can go to the plan and, 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 you know, point to things and, I mean, when you say west side, are you talking back?
No.
Down in here?
It's right there.
Yeah.
That's the area I'm concerned about.
Yeah, either it's a bridge or a tunnel. I mean, all you can do is a crosswalk. You know, there are plenty of locations where people are crossing parking aisles.
It's just, it's just a drive, yeah, it's just a drive aisle and, and it's, the traffic generated from this site is, is relatively low. I mean, I mean, I know there's some trucks, but it's, it's a low traffic generated.
So what if you had it circle around and go out the other way? You can't do that, can you?
Can't do that. So we can, we can, we can try and be as, as inventive as we can in terms of creating things so that pedestrians and drivers will be aware of one another. I'm not saying that's not possible. So we can try and work on that, but we need that parking. So the question that I have for the board is whether, I'm trying to figure out whether the twenty-eighth makes sense and whether we need to go back to Fussin' O'Neill.
You know best.
I, I'd have a hard time saying agreeing that you don't have to go back to Fussin' O'Neill without knowing what you're coming in with. A lot of times that gets triggered by the application, by what, what changes you make. Then the town planner uses some good engineering judgment and says, nah, we can do this or we have to send it to Fussin' O'Neill. I, I, from my standpoint, I could agree that we will try not to involve Fussin' O'Neill, Fussin' O'Neill, but I don't, I wouldn't be comfortable making the commitment.
Right. So, Mr. Chairman, what would be the meeting after January twenty-eighth?
The next meeting is February eleventh.
February eleventh. So that's...
And then February twenty-fifth.
If you wanna take a few minutes, we, we can, we can take a little recess if you, if you wanna huddle.
Okay, that's, thank you very much. We'll do that.
Mr. Mills?
I'd like you for a two-minute recess.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. And all in favor, we'll see you in a little bit. Thanks. Oh, okay. I didn't realize for TV. Yeah, we're, Planning Board is back in session from a two-minute recess during which you huddled and you're back to say?
February 11th.
February 11th at, do we have, is that a 7 o'clock open? So what we have... Do you have to revise this? That goes?
Yeah.
So what we have is a form request for extending the approval period. So they're going to go in and change that. So you'll be continued to February 11th. But before we can do that, we have to grant your request for an extension of the approval period. February 11th is a Monday, so we usually ask to extend the approval period, especially in the wintertime, to the Friday of that week. In case there's a storm, we can still advertise another meeting and not have a problem. So that would be, the 15th would be the new end of the approval period. Is that your request?
Yes.
Mr. Mills.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we extend the approval period for Zero Furman Ave Major Site Plan Approval to February 15th end of business.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? All in favor? So that's for the site plan. Now, so it seems that we've already gotten to a point in this hearing that we're not asking you to do the lid. No submittal for the lower impact development.
The lid special permit?
Yes.
Okay.
That's a separate public hearing, but I don't see it posted here.
We filed everything together and everything's been traveling together. That's our understanding.
Okay. Hold on. We have to do some checking here.
I, we opened them both, I believe. Let me just go grab the legal ad. I'm pretty sure I read it that we opened both. We just may not be carrying...
Okay.
Are you talking about the initial ad or the, you're talking about the initial ad?
Initial ad.
Yeah.
I believe they were both on there.
Yeah, I think they were both on there.
Yeah, the initial ad. I'm just going to go quickly check. Actually, I have...
This is administrative. I'm, I'll recap this in a minute for the public and for you, but I just want to have a minute of administrative discussion here. So we're checking some more back papers, public documents to make sure that from this point forward, we proceed not just to protect the board, but to protect your application and make sure that we do it properly. So we'll take another minute or two.
So I have the, a copy of the public hearing notice in front of me stamped October, stamped in October 30th. And it refers to 17410 of the code in the application for major site plan approval. It does not refer to the request for the exemption from the lid special permit, but that's not a public hearing. That was a letter that we wrote to the board.
No, but the, your application for a special permit for the lid is a public hearing.
Yeah, but we did not apply. We did not apply.
You did not apply. So we're looking for something?
Asked for a waiver. It's just a letter.
Okay. So you never, I thought earlier you said they traveled together, but you never made a lid application?
No. Correct.
That's probably why we're not seeing it in our...
Let me go talk to Karina about it.
Yeah, yeah. Thanks, Dan.
Yeah, but what traveled together was the application along with a letter. I spoke with Karina. She said you have to do a letter. I respectfully disagreed with her, but I said I will file it anyway.
So, yeah, by the fact, so we've been going through the site plan without addressing your request
Correct.
to waive the lid.
Correct.
So we need to do that. We need to do that. We should do that tonight. And then if the board votes to not grant you the waiver, then you'd have to submit an application for the lid.
Yes.
And we advertise a public hearing for that special permit.
Yes.
If the board grants or agrees with you that the lid doesn't apply or we may, we may say that it doesn't apply and/or it's waived. Because you didn't agree, you initially didn't agree that it required a waiver.
Correct. We argued that the exemption was self-executing, that we're less than an acre, so therefore the provision of the bylaw didn't apply. The planner explained that's not your custom here. You have to file a letter. And I said, okay, we'll file a letter. In the letter, I said, we're going to reserve our rights to maintain that it's self-executing, but it's just words on the paper. And so we would request that you vote to waive that special permit or confirm that it's exempt.
Or both, just to make sure that, right, okay. Yeah, so we were looking for something that didn't exist.
Correct, because at the time Attorney Levy had requested to reserve his right to the exemption, which was going to be discussed early on, and somehow we moved beyond that just, we were going to, the board was going to opine early on if the exemption or the waiver was the appropriate way to go.
Very good.
And it seemed to have go down this path. So the application was never submitted for the special permit.
We did not file for a special permit.
So the public hearing notice and the public posting of the agendas from November, December, and today are all proper?
Yes.
So I guess I'll ask the board, we'll take, we'll ask the board's opinion as to whether or not we would require the lid. And if we do, then we do. If we don't, then it raises a second question. Is it, does it require a waiver or is it not applicable? Mr. Mills?
So I would be in favor of the lid not being needed. And I'll wait to see what Mr. Jenks says, whether we should waive or...
Just for your information, though, Fussin' O'Neill, in their letter of December 20th, they, they said that because agreeing with counsel here that it's less than an acre, proposes to disturb less than one acre and is thus exempt from the lid. They're using the word exempt.
I'll go with exempt.
Mr. Jenks.
Given that wording, I agree exempt.
Mrs. Latrell.
I agree.
I agree. So the lids, what we've done or not done with the lid is proper. So, Mr. Mills?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we exempt Zero Furman Ave from the requirement of a LID permit for the, special permit for the project proposed at Zero Furman Ave that requires a major site plan approval.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? All in favor? That formalizes it. So we were back to, the board just voted also to extend the approval period for the major site plan approval to February 15th, which now allows us to continue the public hearing to 7 o'clock on February 11th. Right, February 11th.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we extend the public hearing for Zero Furman Ave Major Site Plan Approval to February 11th, 2019 at 7:00 PM.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? All in favor? Five to zero. Counsel, would you, would you sign the form?
Yes.
Okay. Why don't you come up? Take a minute to read it. Make sure it's right. Yep. Oh, oh, go ahead, show us. Yep.
So the, this should be today.
All right.
So.
Motion's been... Yeah, okay.
Cross that out and put it back in. February 11th is correct.
Did you cross it out?
You don't want to initial these things.
Okay. Let me just check with the town planner to see if the, if the town clerk will accept these revisions. I think we're going to retype it. We're going to retype it.
Sorry, it'd be best if we make it clear so the town clerk has no question.
Thank you very much. It's a team effort.
Today's the 7th?
Yeah.
So after this gets stamped by the town clerk, Karina, do you send that to...
Yes, Pam will email you a copy of that once that's stamped.
Thank you. So we've signed the paperwork. The motion was carried to extend the approval period. The motion carried to continue the public hearing. And so you're free to go or you're welcome to stay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Yeah, we did. Yeah. The next item on the agenda is a discussion item, Ilabella Estates.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mills.
I'm going to recuse myself from this discussion.
Very good. This, I'll ask the town planner to update us on this, Jack.
Okay.
Yeah. You're here for the item on the planner's report.
Right. For some reason, the TV went to the flag, so I figured you were done here. And I was surprised when I got here, you were still here.
Was recess.
Ah.
So Karina, if this item, this has to do with the covenant?
Yes. I can quickly explain what happened recently. Was it last fall? No, I'll do it quickly so they can hear.
She's getting paid, actually.
I have to get better at this, so I'm going to, I force myself to do this. The covenant was extended for Ilabella from 2017 to 2019, October. The planning board endorsed the extension. The town clerk never received the original copy. It was recorded. Jack was kind enough to find the original copy, return it here. It was filed with the town clerk and stamped, so those records were complete. So we no longer had to revote to have that formal document. So we no longer had to revote to have that formal, um, document again to give to the town clerk, because the town clerk only accepts the originals. So that's been resolved. Everything's in order.
Any questions, comments?
But we did revote it, didn't we? Do we vote to extend it again?
Yes, there was an extension from 2015 to October 2017.
But just recently.
And recently, we extended it from October 2017 to give Jack till 2019 to, um, complete the construction for Isabella.
Okay.
But what happened is that document that the planning board signed never made it to the town clerks to get officially stamped into record before it left the building. So I, I was gonna ask for the planning board to revote that same term from 2017 to 2019, just to mitigate that we have a document on file.
I thought this was on the agenda, like the la, I thought we already did this, but that's okay. Previously, like a previous meeting, like the last one? It doesn't really matter, as long as it was off.
It was, and it was taken off because, um, it was over the holidays and Jack wanted to be here.
Oh, okay, okay.
But he wasn't available, so we pushed it to this meeting. So you're right.
Very good.
Appeared and then disappeared, and then came back.
Okay.
And then got resolved before tonight. Thanks.
We're getting good at, uh, things appearing and disappearing. Next item on the agenda is a discuss, oh, we have to get Mr. Mills back. I see him, but I don't, there he comes. Next item on the agenda is a discussion item, Chestnut Meadow Subdivision Initial Bond Estimate Review. Ask the town planner to update us on this, please.
Are you Michael Feldman?
Yes.
Okay, hi, Michael.
Hi.
Karina Quinn. Last year, Planning Board approved definitive subdivision for Chestnut Meadow, um, off of Zero Chestnut Hill Road. Construction began through all the proper processes. Fussin' O'Neill was, um, charged with, um, performing inspections throughout the construction to this date, because eventually the roadway Dairy Farm Lane is going to be requested to become a public road. When the construction got to a certain point, Habitat Communities, Michael Feldman is here this evening, requested that, um, an initial bond estimate be produced to determine the amount of construction work that's still remaining to satisfy, uh, the roadway and the infrastructure to be built. Back in November 26th, Fussin' O'Neill performed a site inspection, at which they determined and prepared a bond review in the amount of $395,000. This bond estimate, initial bond estimate, um, was forwarded to, um, Cornerstone Engineering and to Habitat, um, and I believe to the contractor as well, he was in the list, Barrows Construction. The Habitat Communities is in agreement with the bond amount. They are current, they have recently provided a bond surety agreement that has been forwarded to Town Council, um, December 27th, December 27th of 2018, during the holidays, um, of which we're still waiting to get Town Council's opinion on the form of the bond. So in speaking with Mr. Feldman throughout the course of the last two weeks, he thought it would be good if we, if he attended this evening and at least discussed the bond estimate with the planning board. And then, again, come on another agenda to then, when we have, uh, Town Council's opinion on the surety bond format, for that to be accepted. So that's where we are tonight.
Oh, good evening.
Hi.
Tell us your name and who you're with.
So my name is Michael Feldman, I'm the CFO of Habitat Communities. So we're developing the Chestnut Meadow Subdivision. We've, so we've completed the infrastructure through the binder. So we've completed the road and, you know, road drainage and electric and all those things. And we're gonna be going, you know, we'd like to apply for building permits shortly and start home construction. So, you know, so we're at the point now where we'd like to put a bond in place so that, you know, the town, you would release lots for us to be able to pull permits.
So we're at a point where we have a number and you've agreed to it?
Yes.
So we just need, once Town Council says the format of your, uh, paperwork is, is okay, then, um, the board will vote?
Okay.
Yeah? I'll open up to the board for any questions or comments, Mr. Mills?
Um, I have no que, questions. Thanks.
Mr. Jenks?
Is the road still closed?
Uh, no, I believe it's open.
It's been open now?
Yeah.
Um, all your utilities are underground?
Yes.
And all of the utilities are in to the, to each lot?
Yes, yeah, there's, um, everything's stubbed out to each lot right now.
Um, so at this point, it's the binder on the road, which you'll complete in the future. I don't remember from the plan, curbing?
Yeah, there'll be curbing. So we'll, we'll be completing curbing and landscaping and fence and walls kind of as we, as we go through the development.
And, and the binder, what's your schedule for that? When do you think you'll be completed?
With the whole development?
Yeah.
It's 24 to 30 months, so two to three years.
Uh, no more questions?
Mrs. Latrell?
Uh, no questions.
I went by there yesterday, uh, and I could be wrong, maybe I see it all the time and I think it's still there, but I thought the sign that said, uh, that it's only open to construction vehicles was still there.
That's my recollection of the last time, but...
Are we talking about this, the road inside the subdivision?
No, the Chestnut Hill, that, from the subdivision out, um...
Okay, oh, yeah, I'm not aware, I'm sorry.
I think, uh... Yeah, and I think it's to keep the construction vehicles off of that primitive part of, uh, Chestnut Hill Road and have them just use the straightaway where we put the new water line in. So that might be like that for a long time. Because you're gonna be getting concrete trucks.
Yeah.
Form trucks, lumber deliveries.
Yeah.
All the tradesmen, tradespersons, for a long time.
Yes.
Yeah. So, uh, we'll put this on the next agenda, hoping that we get, uh, enough information to, to act.
Great, so when was that, the 28th?
Yes, it'll be January 28th. And soon as we get, uh, Town Council's opinion back, I'll forward it immediately so that you have a chance to review it as well.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Nice meeting you.
Thanks, Michael.
Okay, next item on the agenda is Tree City USA Program slash Application. Ask the town planner to, um, give us the background on this. We have in our, uh, handouts, um, the Mass, the DCR, Urban and Community Forestry Program, Tree City USA in Massachusetts, flyer. Karina?
Okay, let me get you up to speed here. Discussion, Chestnut Meadows. Back in fiscal year 18, um, the planning department and the planning board, had a tree planting program study done, um, through Mass Autobahn to initiate, um, you know, tree planting in the town, um, for a couple of reasons. One being that the 300th anniversary would be coming up in 10 years at that point. And also to help mitigate some of the tree losses in town. So as part of that study, um, one of the recommendations that Mass Autobahn had was that the town should possibly pursue the Tree City USA Program, which is a program that encourages tree planting as a resource and showing the community and other towns and cities that, um, are around you that trees are an important resource, resource to your community. So based on that, um, for fiscal year 19, we have some funding in place to, um, move on and take the next step in this program. So I did some research, and the Tree City USA, um, has four basic requirements that you have to go through in order to, um, become known as a tree city. And the application requires that you have a tree board or a department. Uh, this can be a forestry department, a tree warden, or a volunteer tree board. The Public Works Department in Southboro has a tree warden, or it falls under the DPW. They need a minimum community, we need a minimum community forestry annual budget of $2 per capita, with about 10,000, just under 10,000 people in town. That would be $20,000. I spoke with the Public Works Department, and they have, um, more than that in a budget that handles tree removal, tree planting. And the criteria for the Street, Street, Tree USA Program says all work related to the management of community trees, meaning planting, tree removal, and maintenance, as well as administrative and equipment expenses and in-kind services are allowed in this budget. So we have that component addressed. You have to have a tree care ordinance, and, um, an ordinance will designate the tree board or department and determine policies for planting, maintaining, and removing public trees. Master in the Law, Chapter 87, will be accepted if it has been adopted by the municipality. I'm not, not sure that it has, but we're working, um, I'm gonna be researching with Pam to see if we can find another local tree ordinance that we could use as a sample to come up with that. And then you have to have an Arbor Day observance and a proclamation, which means it can be as simple as one, once a year, you have Arbor Day and you have to plant at least one tree on that day. We do have a placeholder on the town warrant for potential ordinance. So that's what we're working on. This is a great program. I'm hoping that, um, we can pull this together. If we can't, well, if there's potentially a special fall town meeting, then we could maybe finish it out at that point. But my next step is, um, if we do need some assistance from, uh, a supporting consultant to review a tree care ordinance, that we have some funds allocated to that for this fiscal year that we could tap into. And that's, um, on my to-do list. So if you have any questions on that.
Very good. Also, we'll invite, uh, people to go to the website, the Tree City website for Massachusetts, and see all the cities and towns that are, um, tree cities. There's quite a few, and it's, uh, kind of a surprise or amazing that Southboro hasn't, uh, you know, entered into this program before this, but, um, it's good, it's good that we're doing it now. Mr. Mills? Questions, comments? Mrs. Latrell?
So, does Southboro currently have a tree warden? I know the last time I checked, there was no one appointed.
I think right now they're utilizing a co, like a contractor who assists them. I think they have an arborist they tap into too, for a tree warden. I remember when I first started, there was a tree warden on a part-time basis. But part of my research, I'm gonna follow up to make sure we have that designation. But the DPW in general, who takes care of this and has contractors, and I believe an arborist that they hire to look at trees when they have questions, would cover that criteria. But I'll confirm that, if we have one.
Because I think, like, the Mass General laws that covers, like, public trees requires a tree warden? And like, there's supposed to be hearings before trees are removed and...
Yeah, so I think there is, because I, I remember in the annual report of last year, I saw a tree warden listed. I can't remember his name, but I remember looking there.
I'll check again, but I know the last time I checked, there was no one appointed, so that means they're, if they're not appointed, then they're not.
Not there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Jenks?
Um, are you, are you writing up anything for town meeting on this, or an article, or...
I haven't started yet, but that's the goal.
Okay, I would just, it's picky, but let me just make the comment that where it talks about ordinance, you use the terminology bylaw. City, cities, I think I'm right on this, cities do ordinances and towns do bylaws.
Okay.
Just picky little thing.
I'll note that. And I also want to point out that, um, the people who represent this program, it's the DCR and the Arbor Day Foundation. And they have, um, a go-to person that I've already contacted, that tells you the steps of the application exactly, and she works with me, corresponding email back and forth, so it's, it's gonna be a big help.
Anyone else? Yes, sir?
Tim Lit. So Mr. Jenks is correct, it's a bylaw, not an ordinance. Ms. Quinn is correct, we do have a, a tree warden, uh, position. I'm not clear if it's actually filled. I do know that when I had, uh, a tree removed next to my driveway that was about to fall down by itself, uh, someone did have to come out and inspect and tag, but I don't know that. My, I, I like the program. My concern is that all the money we seem to be spending, at least from the town side, is on removing trees and removing branches. I don't recall a time when the town, in recent memory, has actually put in a tree. So I mean, if we go forward, I think it's important that it's a balanced program. I know that, uh, conservation and others have required, I think you folks as well, have, have required developers to plant trees in replacement for, uh, things that they take down, but we're, it still seems to me to be a net loss, at least on my street. In the past couple of years, I think maybe a dozen trees have come down and none have gone up. So, I mean...
That's one of the things that prompted this several years ago. Hundreds, hundreds of trees have been removed.
You know, gypsy moth and salt erosion and all that.
But I can tell you, uh, Tim, that, uh, just recently, I was at the cemetery, at my family's, uh, gravesite, and where I usually walk, uh, I had to, like, step a little bit out of the way, there was a tree there. And then I, as I looked around the cemetery, there must have been, um, maybe at least eight or 10 trees planted throughout, which I was, um, I, I think the first time that I can remember in a long time that the town has, has planted a tree. So, um, it is part of the program, and it seems like the DPW is, uh, finally getting to address plantings.
Well, that would be great. I think, though, you know, planting in the cemetery is a little bit different from repopulating the stuff along the roadway. And, you know, if it comes to me in, in, in front of town meeting, I'd like to see whatever bylaw we put in place specify that, you know... I'd like to see whatever, uh, by law we put in place specify that, you know, we actually have a program and a budget for planting trees, not just taking them down, 'cause otherwise, this is just cosmetic, and I think slightly deceptive.
Right, and our early discussions with the DPW was that we wanted to, the planning board wanted to move forward with this program, but not at the expense of the, uh, of line items within the DPW's budget, that they wouldn't suffer from this, that it would be in addition to, uh, what they have now.
And this is a bad year for that. You know, from the point of view of the town, overall town finances.
Right.
It's, it's really difficult.
But we also, uh...
So I'm, I'm also going forward, don't get me wrong, but I, I, as I say, I think it's important that it's balanced, and I think it's important that, you know, we legislate that, you know, some portion of the twenty thousand dollars or whatever it is actually really goes to increasing the number of trees, not just decreasing the trees and branches. That's my two cents.
Thank you.
Maybe three cents.
I think, um, equally important is funding for maintenance of new trees, particularly while, while they're, um, just starting to grow. I know trees were planted at the back of the Woodward School as a buffer for the neighbors, and nobody cared for them. They died. Town came out and planted them again the next year. Nobody cared for them, and they died. And then the neighbors stopped asking for it, but, um, having maintenance as part of the plan is, uh, critical.
The tree policy, there's a tree policy online, the town has a tree policy, and most of it, I think, addresses removal, or removing limbs or removal of trees. And it's, in my opinion, is deficient, uh, in, as Tim said, you know, a planting program and a maintenance program. Mrs. Luttrell?
Did Southborough adopt, uh, Mass General Laws Chapter eighty-seven? Which is on...
I looked and I did not see it. I queried the town code looking for something on Chapter eighty-seven, and I didn't see that. So, and it was a preliminary search right now, so...
You probably wouldn't see that in the, in the town code. It would be, um, an action of town meeting. There would have been a town meeting article that says, you know, the town adopts the provisions of, uh, whatever it is you're citing. Uh, town council might know, or the town clerk might know, but it wouldn't... We, we accept a lot of those things. They don't end up in the town code.
Okay, and I also corresponded with, um, DPW director, who also believed that, she thought it hadn't been addressed either, that she didn't see eighty-seven, so...
Yeah, I don't remember one way or the other, but it's, it, you have, you would have to look in the minutes of town meeting for an article that, that did that.
All right, thanks for the tip.
Anything else on Tree City?
One, one more thing. And so if we write an ordinance, I would, um...
A bylaw?
Have it mention that we plant native trees. A bylaw, I'm sorry. Forgive me.
That we would what?
Uh, plant native trees. No Bartlett pears.
And I just wanna point out one more thing to answer the question about the costs and the planting of trees that, um, Mr. Lit had mentioned. The Arbor Day Foundation puts out a similar flyer to the DCR where they identify the four standards that I went over. And the third standard is the Community Forestry Program with a two dollar per capita. And it says, "Most communities probably already spend at least two dollars per capita. Also, community trees, when cared for, can actually save money. A managed program can ensure ben- can ensure benefits that surely outweigh cost. It does require dollars to plant and keep trees in healthy condition, but this should not be a barrier to becoming a Tree City USA." So you can, I, I know what you're saying, but you can start and then work on those fixes while you're in this program, 'cause there may be other benefits that this program opens up that if you're a part of, you could maybe find funding avenues that way, too. So, we wanna just keep moving on this one way or another, and refine it and make it better. That's all I have to say.
Anyone else? Next item on the agenda is the master plan update. I'll ask the town planner to, um, take us up on this one.
Okay, I'll just preliminarily say that, um, Pam Rivera, my assistant, has been working on this, um, pretty consistently, along with Mimi Luttrell, on, um, getting the word out and getting members to join the committee. And I'll let Pam follow up on that, 'cause she's been working on it very closely.
Thank you. So we've have, uh, we sent out the preliminary information in regards to the charge, and the stakeholders that we were looking, um, to get as volunteers on the committee, to all of the boards, um, within the town that we had identified. And lots of, um, of the boards have nominated individuals for, um, for the committee. So, I, what I've started to do is I've started to do a tracking sheet that's up behind you, so you can kinda get a sense of, um, who has been recommended, what committees we've heard from, what committees we haven't heard from yet. Um, and I've been sending out, like, every two weeks, reminders to all of the committees just to get us names as soon as possible. Um, and then tracking when they've been appointed, the letter that has, that needs to be submitted to the town clerk, and when they've been sworn in. So just in terms of keeping us, um, on track here. As far as, um, getting it on, out to the members at large, I talked to the town clerk in detail about this. And because the charge isn't dated, um, they can't get it out there. So we need actually to vote on, um, a start and an end date for the master plan committee. In the charge that we originally had done, it had said when the planning board adopts the, um, revised master plan. So we just need to have a date. So recommendation from the town clerk was to start it today, January seventh, and have it end at the end of the fiscal year 2020. Um, and then if it goes over that, or if we want it to be under that, that would be the term in which people would be appointed and sworn in. So, I wanna open up to the board for comments or questions in regards to that term.
Do you have the, uh, the title of the, uh, is it a subcommittee? Is it a committee?
No, it's a committee. And then we were gonna be talking about, once we get started, doing subcommittees within the committee. But, no, it is a committee.
And what's the name of it?
Master Plan Committee.
So you need a vote to create a master plan committee with a start date of today and an end date of June thirtieth?
Twenty twenty.
Two thousand and twenty.
Do you also have to define any more of the members, like ex officio?
Yeah, so we need to, so, do you want me to just go through all of it right now? Or do you wanna go through each part?
Well, is it, uh, is it appropriate to create the committee first? With a start and an end date, and then, or should it all be one motion?
I'm gonna leave that up to you, I don't know.
Let me add this, that the charge also has to be refined to include, like, me as the town planner, as ex officio, non-voting, non-quorum committee member, so to speak, so that I can attend the meetings. Yeah. Sort of, yes, I do. So there's two parts to updating the charge, right? We have to not only give an end date, start an end date to define the terms, but also we have to add me as an ex officio, the town planner, right?
Isn't that, isn't that an appointment?
Is that an appointment, or does it have to be actually listed in the charge?
I don't think that's in the charge, I think that's an appointment.
Well, so the, the master plan committee that we created doesn't include the town planner as an ex officio.
No, that's what we need to add as a stakeholder, we need to add somebody from the ADA and from Trails.
And town planner as an ex officio.
Yeah.
And the Recreation Director has requested to be added as an ex officio.
So before you vote, I just wanna make sure you have all the items that have to be revised in the charge.
Okay.
Well, can you give us that?
Yes.
So that he, Mr. Mills can make the motion? Hi, Doreen.
Hi.
Welcome.
Thanks. So, um, I just recently, um, received the email for this committee. I shared it with the commission at our meeting Sunday, and, um, I said that the, the committee was from the Rec- Recreation Department. And they said, "Well, what about the commission? Can we get involved?" So, rather than having two voting members from the Recreation Department and Commission, we're asking that I be listed as an ex officio and have a member of the commission on there. 'Cause I think on the charge, it says Rec Department.
It does.
Doesn't say Rec Commission.
So just to be clear...
I think the intention was Commission. Oh, it does say Department.
Yeah, it probably should say Commission.
Well, so that's another, something else we need to fix.
Yeah, so that's all I wanted to clarify with you guys.
So that means you're gonna stay throughout the entire time, through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty? Is that what I'm hearing?
That's what I heard.
No.
Thank you.
No. So. Okay, all set?
Can I ask you a question, Doreen? Do you, do you want the Recreation Director to be an ex officio, or would you prefer just a member of the Recreation Commission?
No, it should be both.
Okay, okay.
Do you need more than two minutes? Oh, you're done. This could be a work in progress.
Okay, we go now.
Okay, so can you, uh, can you say the, the draft motion? Which would be?
Yes.
The motion would be to create a master plan committee.
Well, we already have it...
But we didn't do it with a start and an end date.
We're gonna revise the charge so that we can resubmit it revised to town clerk. So you need, the board needs to vote on these revisions, which are...
Correct.
...itemized.
So what's the first revision?
First revision is that the master plan committee charge include a start and end date with the start date of today, January seventh, two thousand and nineteen, and ending the last day of fiscal year twenty.
June thirtieth.
June thirtieth.
Two thousand and twenty.
Two thousand and twenty. In addition, the charge needs to include membership from one member from the Trails Committee, one member from the ADA Committee, one member from the Recreation Commission as an ex officio. Not an ex officio, just one member from the Recreation Commission.
Recreation Director is an ex officio.
Okay.
Commission is voting.
Okay, so it was one member from the Trails Committee, one member from the ADA Committee, one member from the Recreation Commission, and then the Recreation Director as an ex officio with non-voting and non-quorum obligation, right? Uh, town clerk said that we should definitely specify that, so that it's clear in the future. And that the town planner be added as well as an ex officio, non-voting, non-quorum member.
So moved.
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor? Four to zero. So that will be a new, um...
Revised.
Revised letter from the December fifth letter that we sent to the town clerk. There'll be a new one that I will sign, uh, to the town clerk, capturing what we just did.
Thank you. That's good.
Can someone volunteer from the commission?
Uh, yeah, hello.
Thank you.
So, um, is that it on the master plan, uh, appointment discussion?
Well, now we need to appoint members to it.
I'll ask the town planner to recite the, uh, motion to appoint.
Okay. So who do we have here? The open space?
Yep.
EDC?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, this one? We have three people, right?
No, we have, um, Technology Committee, one for sure from Board of Selectmen, two from Board of Selectmen, is it?
Mm-hmm.
Um, Open Space, Economic Development. We actually have to appoint planning. And then we have a member at large.
Karen. Mimi, and Stan.
And then the Recreation Director.
I think, right now, we have one appointment from the Board of Selectmen. Yeah, it's on, so, so Dan Kalunda was volunteered when he wasn't there, so I think they need to check with him to see.
So we'll hold on that.
Yeah, he wasn't gonna do it, Lisa was gonna do it?
Right, so we need to wait and see.
Okay.
Barney for, for sure, though.
Okay, so these are the people. One, two, three, four, five, six, and Doreen.
Yeah.
Or say Recreation, okay. Doreen, are you here? Are you here to be appointed as the Recreation Director? Okay. Co-chair, Mr. Mills. Okay. So you want me to, you start a motion and then I say it? Or how does it go?
You can say that the motion, uh, should be, and then...
All right, the motion, uh, to appoint members to the master plan committee
Should be.
Should be, um, the committee and the name, right? From the Technology Committee, Mr. Matthew Probst. From the Board of Selectmen, Ms. Bonnie Fenneff. From the Open Space Preservation Commission, Ms. Karen Sitkovich. From the Economic Development Committee, Kathy Bartolini. From the Planning Board, Ms. Mimi Luttrell. From the Planning Board, Mr. Andrew Mills. Member at large, Mr. Sam Stivers. And from the Recreation, Recreation Director, Ms. Doreen Ferguson.
So moved. So the motion has been made, uh...
Oh, also the ex officios, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
My apologies. The Recreation Director, just to reiterate, will be, um, an ex officio member with non-voting and no quorum obligation. And the town planner, myself, Karina Quinn, the same as an ex officio. And the town planner, myself, Karina Quinn, the same as an ex officio, non-voting and not to be included in a quorum.
So the, the motion has been stated. Does anyone want to make the motion? So moved. Motion's been made.
Second.
And seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Excellent. Any more on the master plan? Do we have to get sworn in for this? Do we have to go the? Fifteen days it gets sworn in? So at some point in the very near future, the town planner and if needed, myself, will dive deeper into getting a consultant onboard this fiscal year real soon to assist the committee, now that the committee has been established. We need the consultant onboard ASAP. And that will help us as we finish out this fiscal year to determine if additional consulting or additional work items are needed to bring us to the goal line of a new master plan. And to what extent, if any, funding would be needed for a consultant in the next fiscal year, which we have in our budget right now, our proposed budget. So that will be happening, that discussion will be happening real soon. Right, Karina?
Correct.
Next item on the agenda is a discussion of the FY '20 planning budget. In our packet, we have a spreadsheet from the town treasurer listing all of the proposed budget numbers for each of the departments in the town. And our focus is on the planning board number 175 line item where we're being asked to reduce our number by $6,000. We're proposing a 4.09% increase from the current year budget. And the reason for that increase, the main reason is driven by the master plan. Consulting needs for the master plan. Is that correct, Karina? You want to add to that?
Uh, yeah, the fiscal year 20 that we're requesting our bottom line budget is a 4.09% increase from fiscal year 19. What's changing is the miscellaneous contracted services outline, line item on the budget. So for fiscal year 20, we identified $12,800 for miscellaneous contracted services. But you have to note that 3,300 of that is for Recording Secretary, which used to be under overtime salaries. And in fiscal year 20, we moved that to miscellaneous contracted services, which leaves us with $9,500 for two programs that we're working on. One is the expanded open space monitoring, which we're hoping to do a few more sites this year before the end of the fiscal year. And the other is the master plan support services. As Dawn mentioned, to have someone onboard to start giving us some guidance and the committee guidance on what to watch out for, how intense the revision has to be, those kinds of items. And I just want to point out that in fiscal year 19, our miscellaneous contracted services line item was for $7,000. A, because $3,200 for the Recording Secretary was under the salaries portion and not under contracted services. So in fiscal year 19, which we're currently in, that money was programmed for expanded open space monitoring, which again, I think I misstated earlier, but we want to do that under this fiscal year and expand the Tree City USA program with hopes that if there was any left, which I doubt, we could do some research on some zoning code software that might help us lead into zoning code updates. But primarily, it was for open space monitoring. I prepared a memo dated January 3rd to Mark Purple and the treasurer for the Board of Selectmen's meeting on Thursday outlining the planning fiscal year 20 budget and goals, describing these programs, which again is the expanded open space, master plan support, the expanded tree program, and such, so that they would have a clearer understanding why it's so important to have this amount. It's not a huge amount, but it's a, it's a small amount that goes a long way. There's a lot of bang for the buck in, in, in what we're trying to do here. So it's my opinion that, you know, the $6,000, if this was cut, we're kind of just at a standstill. We can't move forward on any of these initiatives that we've already invested in. And again, you know, it's not a large investment, but it's enough that demonstrates that planning is being proactive and addressing items that the town has found important in the past, like open space. And the fact that the master plan has to be updated. And that trees, you know, a tree program of some sort should be implemented and carried out. So in the two years I've been here and the research I've done, I'm trying to bring that together and demonstrate that in this memo, that these are important things not to cut.
It's also important to note that the master plan is a, is not a, an every year item. We'll be splitting it between two fiscal years, or maybe not. But we need, we need to make sure that we have funding in there for the consultant so that we can keep this thing moving and get it done. And, and not have it stall because of a lack of funding. It's also noted that there are other departments with similar sized budgets that are in the range, the percentage increase range of the planning board. So what I would recommend, and I'll, as I spoke with the town planner on this, I wanted to make sure we put all this in front of us and then ask the board how they feel about the requested reduction. What I would recommend is that we stay with our budget. The town meeting is on March 23rd? Is that right?
Correct, March 23rd.
So between now and March 23rd, we should have a better feel for, I hope we have a better feel for how much work is going to be needed and therefore how much money might be needed from a consultant on a revised master plan. So we should carry this number to, up to that point and be able to report that we need the money going forward. Or be able to tell the townspeople that the budget before them, even though it's printed, can be revised accordingly. Hundred dollars reduction, a thousand, or the whole 6,000, somewhere in between maybe. But we don't know right now, and therefore I recommend that we carry this number forward with the selectman knowing that we'll be looking at this right up until March 23rd in the hopes to make a better informed decision about the 2020 budget. Open up to the board. Mr. Mills? I agree with your proposal. Mr. James?
Have, have we sought any estimates for the consulting? Or is that a number we came up with?
That's a number that I estimated. Not with a, not with any direct consultation.
So what happens if we go out for an estimate and it's double what what we have in the budget?
We would reduce the scope of work.
That would leave the argument open. We could, if we can reduce the scope, should we be doing that now?
If we reduce the scope, then it would follow that the task would take a lot longer. And the update would drag out over several years, maybe.
I'm trying to play a bit of devil's advocate here.
Appreciate that.
These will come up at town meetings, so.
Well, it's like any other department. I mean, if you go to DPW and you say, you know, I'm, I'm not looking at it, but they're on this list somewhere. And you say, well, you need to, to, to cut your budget. So no discussion. So, okay, we just won't plow your street as much. We won't sand as much. We won't cut down as many trees. We, our budget gets reduced, we're, we're limited as to what we can do. Even though we hear all the time that, that, you know, we want the planning board to do this. Or on the dark side, why isn't the planning board doing this? Mrs. Luttrell?
Yeah, I think the, the $2,500 for a master plan is unrealistically low. I think they're quoted between like 20 and $50,000.
Yeah, and I can say to that, the $2,500 wasn't meant to be the revision. It's to do an initial contact with the consultant who steps in and says, this is what you are going to need. Provide an estimate by reviewing the current master plan and giving some feedback so that $2,500 isn't revising it, but doing some initial research on understanding the master plan and providing us with a scope.
Okay.
You know, giving us a proposal or not to, for consulting services. It's like the first step.
So what, I would suggest, because I also questioned the open space monitoring. Because when we did the deed research, I don't think it was ever the intention that the planning board would then go and monitor, like check all the open space in town. In fact, we got a great deal of pushback about that. So I think it was good that they did like the initial baseline document and they did that form so we'd have some idea how to proceed in the future. But I don't think that Mass Audubon should be going out and inspecting all our open space. So I would suggest punting that over to the master plan.
But then who would do the open space inspections?
So was it ever intended that we were going to go and inspect all the open space and all the easements in town?
No, but it got to the point in the discussions with the town administrator, open space commission, selectman, pretty much that if we didn't do it, it wasn't going to get done. So we stepped up and fortunately, at, at that fiscal year, which I think was two years ago, we had some funding that we put into it. And what happens is once you do it, then people think you own it. And then it winds up being on our plate. I've never, unless we change the planning department to the planning and land department, that we shouldn't be doing the inspections. But since no one else is doing them, we put it in our budget, try to do as best we can.
Plus, there were also questions at the end of the process that Mass Audubon presented to us last year, that not only we have a form created and they did a pilot test of some of the locations. Some of the other things we wanted to know was, when you do find encroachments, like what would be the best way to mitigate those types of issues? So they were still kind of talking about generalized program features. And it was, it, it did start to transition into, you know, hoping we could do more inspections in order to vet what kind of issues would come up, you know? Is there dumping or is there a gas tank over there? How do you handle those with, you know, the, the people who are infringing? So my thought was that part of the program for this year would be to ask some of those questions and get that reported back on with some opinions from, you know, these specialists, whether it's Mass Audubon or another consultant who, who does that kind of work. Just to give us feedback on, okay, kind of building the project, the program, maybe not doing all the inspection, but we're trying to throw some of the inspections in there so that we had more samples to go by, what problems would arise. So that was kind of my thought process. It's like catch based cleaning, you know, you can't, you probably can't do them all at once, but maybe you do 25% of them every year. And every four years, you've touched base on all of them. So those are the kind of recommendations we were hoping to go to next. So, you know, what kind of program do you instill? Who does it? What do you, how do you mitigate when you get infringements?
Although, although this has been a point of contention forever, but we have a new zoning code enforcement officer, so perhaps it's different. But our zoning code stipulates that the building inspector is responsible for not only enforcing the town code, but also the decisions of the planning board and the zoning board of appeals. So under that would come open space. It's my understanding of the zoning, the planning board really has no enforcement power once we've, once we've permitted a project, then it's pretty much out of our hands.
You're right, there's, the, the different steps were, and from, from, since the beginning of basically the planning board, the planning board creates the open space through subdivision approval and site plan approval. Once it's approved with, and defined, then it would move on to someone else. And the someone else has never really been properly defined. Now, the someone else, I think we've decided would be, the someone else would do the next step after creating it and, and protecting it formally, would be to periodically inspect it. And nobody has stepped up over the years to do those inspections. The inspections don't have to be done by the building inspector. The inspections could be, the way we've set up the form now, the, the, the inspections could be done by just about anybody. And then if suspected violations, non-compliance, then it gets turned over to the zoning enforcement officer for enforcement. That piece has always been there. It's that middle piece of doing the actual inspections. That we've now greatly improved with the inspection form, but we still haven't found a free way to get them inspected.
This has been one of the things on my list for that third leg or third piece of the training that Eldo was doing for the zoning board and the planning board mainly. I, in my mind, it's pretty clear that the open space is set up, established under zoning. The typical procedure for violations is that the zoning enforcement officer. is that the zoning enforcement officer, uh, is responsible for checking them and enforcing them. I, I think the planning board does have a role in zoning, but it isn't an enforcing role. Our site plan purpose says that, lists the things that site planning is supposed to encourage. And the last line of it is, um, something to the effect of, of well complying with all zoning. And my, my thought on the reading I've done about site plan reviews in other towns is that, that probably limits us to, at that point in time, if we find a zoning violation at the time we're doing, now, don't let me say violation. Let me say a, um, if we find a, doing site plan, that a project hasn't, has, isn't meeting all of the zoning it is supposed to meet. Either because maybe there was part of a permit that didn't get applied for, or, um, no one thought it was applicable and there was no waiver. At that point, what the planning board should do is tee it up for the building inspector. And, and say, basically during our site plan review, we discovered this. We could go further and make as a condition of site plan, uh, that, that gets addressed. But, but I think there is a role for, for planning in it. But it, it's, it's not setting the criteria for zoning or enforcing the zoning. Open space is required in our zoning. It's set up by the zoning. And I feel strongly that it ought to be enforced by the zoning enforcement officer.
All of which is, is covered except that one piece, the inspections.
That's only in my mind because the, the zoning enforcement officer has in the past said, I don't know anything about open space, I'm not gonna do it. And, and that's the only reason.
And we don't have the authority to point to somebody and say, then you will do the, you will do the inspections. Selectmen have that authority. They can point to the building inspector and say, you will do the, the, uh, open space inspection. Or they may agree with the past inspector who said, I don't know anything about it. And if you ask me to do it, I'm not the right person to do it.
I, I think the zoning, excuse me, the selectmen, um, ought to confer with town council and then make a decision. Either we're going to enforce open space, or we're not. But not just let it keep riding.
So, um, this discussion item had to do with money. And it always goes to inspection, the, the inspections of the open space, even though that's one of several money items. So Tim, is your comment related to?
Yes, I just, um, in the project list, I didn't hear any, uh, reference to the complete streets. Did that all go to DPW, or what's happening there?
No, I didn't consider that. I know you, that you mentioned it, but I haven't had the bandwidth.
The last report I remember from you is you had said you had talked with DPW and they had sort of started, but not made progress.
Yes, that was last fall.
I'm just wondering if there's a, a budget implication either for you or for DPW, or if it's gonna fall through the cracks.
There isn't one in the planning budget. But if I recall, and I can't say for sure, but I remember seeing something where DPW is interacting with somebody on complete streets.
It's something you, you might wanna track down before the budget discussions. So when, I, I, I think, if there's a decision not to do it, it should be a conscious decision between, you know, you and, and DPW. And if you decide to do it, then the funding should be in one place or the other, or somehow tangible.
It was, it was leaning towards the DPW. And I, and it probably went off my plate because I think something was happening where they were working on. But I can't be sure until I look further into it.
Okay, I just, as I say, you, you should, you should look into it before you settle in on what your budget request is or isn't.
I appreciate you reminding me on that.
So, um, I'll just give you one more piece of it. There was an email, uh, today from town treasurer indicating that, uh, you know, requesting these reductions. And we're not the only ones that are being requested to reduce our budget. And to provide an answer, uh, to the town treasurer, I closed the business today with one exception, and that was the planning board because Karina had told him that we were going to discuss this tonight. So the selectmen are meeting on the tenth, which is in Thursday, to be updated on any revisions to the different budgets. And again, what I was recommending is that we tell the town treasurer tomorrow that we wanna leave our budget line item alone. But that we are committed to working, doing, doing more work on the master plan and get a better feel for what the cost might be with, so that, again, we can make an informed decision right up to the point of the, the town meeting. And that's what I would recommend that we decide tonight. I think we went with Mr. Mills. Mr. Jenks, did you, um, finish with your recommendation? And I don't think we heard from Mrs. Luttrell on the money.
Uh, I, I did have a question on the, on the master plan, on the purpose of hiring a consultant. And I think I heard the town planner say, um, that it was on the front end to help determine what needs to be done, um, what needs to be updated, um, what perhaps we could leave the way it is. Did I hear that right?
Yes, but it's not just what, it's also how.
How?
So if we, if, if the committee goes ahead, for example, and says, uh, I want you all to read the master plan, um, and at our next meeting, submit in writing, uh, your recommendations. Consultant might say, that's the absolute wrong way to do it. You need to have public sessions. You, you need to, uh, break it down into the different components of the master plan and, and approach each one in a, in a separate venue. That's the way to do it. So it's not just what, but it's, and then the feedback from the, from those public sessions or from the committee would also guide the consultant to say, well, in this town, the feedback was, we're gonna do it all in public sessions, we're gonna do it all online, and this, this way. Or, and then based on the feedback, the consultant could then further guide us. So we're not floundering, going in all different directions.
So do we have indication that that process or the requirements of the process have changed since the last time that we did this ten years ago? And the next question is, if we did it then, we oughta know how to do it now. Because I'm, we had a consultant.
Who's the "we" though?
The town. The planning department. It, that's where the responsibility for it is.
There's only one of us that was here ten years ago? So I feel the needle's getting pointed to me. You don't want that.
So, um, do we not have a file somewhere from the last master planning, uh, procedure?
We do have some files. They're not always complete, some are electronic, some are hard copy. Um, Pam and I, in looking at it, have been trying to pull together what and how. And based on that, Pam's been coming up with the approach that she's been going down with Mimi and me and Pam working on it. So it's not just so cut and dry, because we have a PDF, but there was never a Word document. And I know you can probably translate it all, but it may not be as simple as just updating it that way because you have to have it in a format that you can update. So there's all these factors. And we're starting, and we're moving closer and closer and moving forward, but it's not a simple process.
I'm not talking about the updating.
Yeah.
Not, not that process. I'm talking about what you said the consultant was needed for.
Yes.
Which was the, what needs to be updated, not the update.
And I don't mean context, I mean, an overall guidance that we're going down the right path. Because whoever was here ten years ago used the consultant to guide them to do the things they did. Right? They, you went to town meeting, you got seventy-five thousand dollars or whatever it was. VHB was hired and VHB stepped in. A steering committee, committee was established. But it's my impression that VHB did a lot of guiding into what happens to create that ultimate document. In this case, it's an update. My thought was that, just quickly, my thought was that we need a consultant who, once we have this committee established, the committee's gonna have questions. Questions that I can't answer so quickly, Pam can't answer so quickly, Mimi or Andy can't. They would be our go-to person to help point us down the right direction. But also have a means to say, okay, if we do need these kinds of services, this is what it's gonna include. And this is what it's gonna cost, just like a bond estimate. This is what's remaining to be done possibly, maybe not that detailed. But we need an idea of somebody to go to, how, how it's gonna happen.
I assume you would include them in the somebody, they did it before.
Yeah, that's how it would work in the past when I was consultant. You know, if you started helping a town, you kinda had your foot in the door to help. So you would be one of the contenders to then bid on the project to help. So it's not that they're gonna do the work, they're gonna, initially, they're just supposed to help define, was the prior process effective? Has anything been done? Is there something we could do better? Not maybe the nitty gritty yet, but just those big bullet items. So then the committee can take it to a, a deeper context, either full-fledged redo or like Dawn has mentioned, just, you know,
Change the date.
Just change a few numbers to update the census data, which is coming up. So, you know, some guidance, we need some guidance. Is this the right, otherwise, we could be spending money and it's not, it's, we're digging in the wrong hole. We're never gonna find a way.
That's, that's my concern. Are you comfortable with that approach?
Yeah.
I think it's, it's pretty clear from the size of the, the, the number that we're gonna try to do as much as we can in-house. I mean, we have a top-notch, uh, planning department. Um, the technology is a lot better than it was ten years ago. So really, we're gonna, I, I think that's the whole, everything we do, we're gonna look to see if we can do it in-house. But you get to a certain point where you need some expertise beyond what we have.
Well, you, you've obviously gotta allow for everything else they're doing too, so.
Right. So, um, are you in favor of keeping the number or revising it at this time, Phil?
I'm in favor of increasing it, but that's probably not a possibility.
It is, it's our budget. Mrs. Luttrell?
Yeah, I'm in favor of keeping it.
Keeping it, okay, so we'll go forward. We'll inform the selectmen first thing in the morning, uh, of the town treasurer, right?
Yes.
Uh, of, of this discussion. And then, uh, they also, uh, okay, they also, um, invited, uh, members of the different boards to attend on, uh, Thursday night. So, uh, we'll see who's, might be available for that. Sam?
Yeah, Sam Stivers, Presidential Drive. Uh, I was, participated in the last planning process. And also, as a consultant for many years, um, my experience is it's rare to get paid for doing a proposal. So I would believe that, uh, you go to VHB and say, we're thinking about doing this again. Uh, come in and scope it for us, give us a proposal, and give them first shot at proposing and seeing what that looks like. I would be very surprised if they didn't agree to do that for no fee. It would seem to me to be the standard in this business. Uh, and that's twenty-five hundred dollars or whatever, if we think that's, that's what it's gonna cost. These outfits should be more than happy to devote that kind of number to do a proposal in the hope that they will get the business then. And so that would tell us sort of what they think it is. And then we could take that proposal and shop it around if we need to after that point. But I would start with a, a zero-fee proposal. Not to say that one shouldn't leave the twenty-five hundred in the budget, but, uh,
Oh, no, the, the twenty-five hundred isn't for the proposal. I'm with you, we're with you.
That's what I thought I heard.
No, zero.
Okay.
No, no. We expect the consultant to give us a proposal based on a scope of work for free.
Okay.
And then their proposal would be to perform that scope of work.
I see the confusion here. You're, I, I understand what you're saying. When we did projects for a town, they would come to us and say, what do we need done here? And we would go out there for free and we would tell them, this is what we need done, and here's the limits, and this is what we recommend.
Right.
And then they'd make a proposal and then we would bid on it. But in this case, when I say to prepare a proposal, no. To tell us, in addition to that, you know, all the things that come along with it. Not just the proposal, but there's gonna be other questions over the next six months that have to be answered. And like, help us do the proposal, that's great, they'll probably do that. But then there're gonna be specific things. Can you come to a meeting? Can you explain this? What should our scheduling be like? I don't know, I, I just feel like it just can't be nothing. There has to be a little bit of a, a buffer or contingency in case we need assistance.
But again, that's after you hire them, presumably. That's after you hire a consultant.
But to hire them, for example, the scope of work that we intend to use this funding for is, one example would be for the consultant to set up and facilitate public meetings.
Okay, and so that, I guess that's where I'd misunderstood, because I think that's a consulting contract.
It is.
And so, um, I would actually look to the consultant to propose how many meetings you need and when I need to be involved and who needs to be, et cetera, in a fairly detailed way to say, this is the way this project needs to work. And that, in my view, is for free, so that's, I think, what you're saying now, okay.
Yes.
And then, then you say, okay, we'll hire whoever we decide to hire. And at that point, the meter starts. And so I, again, at that point, I don't think twenty-five hundred dollars takes you very far. But, uh, so anyway, one can phase it however one wants, but, uh, likely to be more expensive than that. All right, thanks.
Thank you. Anything else on this? Okay, next item is the planner's report. Karina?
All right, first thing is, um, Mr. Bartolini is here regarding his question on Kane's Crossing that he had proposed and we discussed briefly at the last meeting about wanting to take one of the units.
I'm gonna recuse myself.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Let's come up, Jack.
Go ahead, come here.
So Jack's here to just explain from very clearly what his intent is, um, to take one of those duplex buildings, basically cut it down the middle and just separate it. Not change the square footage, um, not changing the impervious amounts on the site, but just adjusting them ten feet near the direction. Um, so, Jack, why don't you go ahead? Cause you're, you know what you're doing.
What I'm here for is under one-seventy-four dash ten H, which is the site plan review. Uh, it's within, uh, the building inspector's purview to grant rooming something ten feet or so. Since I haven't met the new building inspector and I believe she's been here less than a week and I had talked to Karina about this, I'm, I'm coming to you, um, to see what your thoughts are on this. And then, um, if they're favorable, maybe this can be done through the building inspector. So, I, uh, I set up a little, it shows what the intention is. Hopefully you all can see it. Currently, this was approved for eleven units. And it had three duplexes.
Show us, show us Parkerville Road.
Parkerville Road is here, Southville Road is here. Kane's Crossing is a loop that comes in this way. The units go, one, two, three is a single, four is a single, five is a single, six is a single. We go back to a duplex with seven and eight, a duplex with nine and ten, and then a, a single with eleven. What I'd like to do is take, if the board sees fit here, is to take unit one and two and separate them. And what I would do is move ten feet this direction, ten feet in that direction, which would leave, uh, two separate units. Nothing, number of units doesn't change, impervious doesn't change, landscaping doesn't change, utilities don't change. Nothing changes except that I've separated the two units. And I moved it ten feet this way and ten feet that way.
Mr. Jenks?
Um, why?
The, the reception on this has been very good. Primarily, the first thing everybody says is singles. They prefer to have a single, it's just marketing. It's nothing to do with anything else. I believe, you know, we could sell the duplexes just as easy as we can sell the, the singles. Or, or, I should say, the singles would sell a little better as the duplexes. People prefer the singles. Other than that, it's not.
I, I think, if I remember correctly, the, the bylaw says the building inspector can, um, allow onsite minor changes.
Right.
That are, are, um, required by construction issues like ledge.
No, actually, that's, it, it, that's not how I read it.
Is that a different?
Not foreseen at the time of approval, any increases in size, any of the building structures, changing of the location, parking or access. So, uh, it, it does refer to that, any unforeseen, um, uh, it doesn't even say that. It says, if required by engineering or other circumstances, not foreseen at the time of planning board approval. So I guess I could say, had I been thinking a little bit more, I probably would've made these, uh, singles. So I could say, I didn't foresee it at the time, but this is it.
Or you'd have found some ledge.
Well, I didn't find any ledge, I can't lie, I stand up here and lie, but I, I, I just thought that this is...
I, I'm just speaking to procedure, I mean, I, I think it can be done, but I, I don't think it's the building inspector who can do it. Have you talked to any of the neighbors about doing that? I, I know they, they, uh...
No, I'm not gonna...
Had a lot of input and a lot of comments on it originally. I personally, I mean, it's a very neutral thing to me. I, I can't see that it changes the appearance. Actually, I guess I can and I, I would say it makes it better. I mean, I, I like the separate units from an appearance thing. But I don't live down there and, um, I, I don't know what, what would that do in terms of foundation and, and, um, basement floor area?
Doesn't change a thing.
Well, it's gotta change something cause now you've got, if they're square or rectangular, you've got, um, instead of six foundation walls, um, you've got two in the middle.
Well, there's a potty wall in the middle to begin with, so there's a concrete wall that goes in the middle. I mean, it really doesn't.
And now there'd be two.
Karina has asked me this, Jesus, what does it change? Other than the appearance and it separates it to two singles?
You know why I'm asking that question? Because there was a lot of, um, discussion about whether, whether these buildings were gonna affect the water table and if there's a difference in them, the question's gonna come up again. Uh, and is something we, I think, need to consider. I, I, you know, without looking at it, I don't know that it would, but, um, are, are you having trouble marketing these now or with?
No.
Okay. So, when you say the reason is purely marketing, but you're...
People prefer the, the singles.
Yeah.
And the, uh, so, I mean, when I tell people I'm doing it over fifty-five, they go, great. You have any singles? And then I say, yes. And we have two or three people waiting. I, I didn't wanna take their money cause there, some prices have gone up and things on us, so I just, but... I just wanted to try and do this as simple as possible. If it's a big problem, I'll leave it the way it is.
Well, I, I don't look at it as a big problem. It's, um, I, I think, I'd like to think back to the questions that neighbors asked on the first time through and see if this would affect any of that. And of course, the, the groundwater was the one I remember the most questions being asked about, but...
Thank you, Mrs. Luttrell?
Um, yeah, I think Mr. Jenks is right. The building inspector can't authorize anything. He can with the approval of the site plan review committee. So if there's a minor departure, um, uh, may be authorized by the building inspector after approval of the site plan review committee. So the buildings are gonna be ten feet apart?
No. Ten feet this way, ten feet that way, there's twenty feet in the middle.
Oh, so, I think that, so, changing the location of any building by more than ten feet? I don't know, I'd have to think about this. I think it may have to come before the planning board.
Jack, a couple of questions. Um, you said, uh, the, more on the engineering side, uh, I talked to Karina about this. The site drains to the west, right?
There is drainage actually still. There's drainage, there's drainage in the front here and here, there's drainage out back here.
Okay, so that would be a minimum of two drainage catchments? My concern was that if the drainage, uh, if the, if the, the, the whole building is in one catchment and then when you move it, you're moving half of that building into another catchment that doesn't include the calculations for that impervious area. Do you know what I mean?
I, I know what you mean. Does it go this way into this section here or does it go into this section?
And by moving, by moving any of this impervious, which is the building, ten feet this way, does it affect that catchment? Does it affect the other catchment? Or is it all one catchment and it doesn't matter where it is because it's the same area?
It, it really doesn't matter, it's the same area. I, I did talk to Peter about this. It, it doesn't really matter, it's the same area. No matter how the site is, it's still, the, the drainage calculations have been taken for this area, this area, this area, there's an area over here. This area is still gonna drain into the same basin or...
Even with the, even with part of the building ten feet further to the west?
Pipes are still gonna go in the same, same area.
Okay, that was one question.
Okay.
And then you said it doesn't affect the landscaping. In between those other buildings, the twenty feet in between?
There are some trees.
It's just grass? No, that's outside, I'm talking about in between the other singles. In between the other singles, if there was landscaping to soften between the singles, then you'd have to add some landscaping to soften between...
You'd add a couple of trees probably, yeah. But they'd end up being more.
Yeah. Yeah, it would be more, yeah, because you're creating two new walls.
Right.
And one new space that wasn't there. So there would, there would...
Whatever was, whatever was in, in these areas here, we'd probably have to add something in here.
Right. Um, Phil, the way I remembered it, um, the units along Southville Road, the neighbors were, the comments, it seemed like, were more addressing the units along Southville Road.
The back door of the...
Yeah, and saving those trees along the road and also the height of the, the roofs and also the decks.
Right.
But I don't remember any comments, um, even though the, the building we're talking about is right, right, one of the two that are right next to Parkerville. But I don't remember any comments other than the drainage.
Right. On the, where you have singles now, Jack, are there, weren't there some decks in, in the middle?
There's patios in the, in the, in the middle. The patios haven't changed, everything's the same.
No decks?
Well, there are, there's possibility of some decks, it's patios. And over fifty-five, you wanna keep the number of steps down.
Right.
So that's what we're trying to do. Off the top of my head, I, I can't remember which ones are decks. If I had to guess, I'd say these two here, um, and these are patios. There's a difference.
I'd have, I'd have said the decks were on the south side, but...
I don't remember.
Your, your memory's probably a lot better than mine. But my question is, if you cut the building and separate the pieces, are there going to be decks in the middle or patio?
No, the decks, everything stays the way it is.
So no decks, flat wall?
The decks are, the decks are, are, are on...
On the end?
On the outside edges.
Okay.
So we're just moving, splitting the driveways, putting, we're just going this way.
So the inbound building, the west of the two, that has a deck on its westerly side?
Correct.
And when you move that ten feet west, how far is the deck away from the next structure?
Uh, I didn't put a number down here, but, uh, I'm looking at this. I'm gonna say approximately eighteen to twenty feet somewhere, that's a, a, a good educated guess. Not, not uncommon with the others.
Okay.
I mean, this is condominium living, so it is tighter.
Yeah, no, I, um... Yeah, I, I don't know that I've got a strong feeling on the other.
All right.
Yeah, I think it... Just one second. It sounds like the board is not opposed to you doing this, Jack, but we wanna make sure that we're, we follow the right procedure. So go ahead, Karina.
Yeah, in, in, um, talking to Phil and Mimi's concern about the procedure, and I'm reading here again, minor departures from the site plan is approved, may be authorized by the building inspector after approval of the site plan review committee if required by engineering or unforeseen circumstances, if you move more than ten feet. So, it sounds like even if it's a minor departure to, in order to maintain proper procedure, you'd still have to go to minor site plan to get the building inspector sign off on it, right?
It does, but this says, all right.
Well, we keep saying, or we keep saying more than ten feet.
Ten feet.
And if you're ten feet, does that apply?
And that is, it says if, um, any change increasing the size of any building, which you're not, or structure, changing the location of any building, which you are, parking or access road, which you're not, by more than ten feet. If you're changing the location of any building by more than ten feet or reducing landscaping, so, that's where the interpretation issue is. Is it two units and you're changing one unit ten feet and one unit, or is it the building and you're... It's tough because you're splitting it, so you're, it's this whole gray area.
The sum is twenty feet. The sum of the move, the sum of...
The sum is different, that's right.
The sum of the movement is twenty.
But the movement is...
But the movement is, is ten.
Yeah.
But that's saying, but let me just reinterpret this again because that's part B. Part A is any minor, minor departure from the site plan is approved, may be authorized by the building inspector upon, after approval of the site plan review committee, if required. Then it says, any change increasing the size or location of any building by more than ten feet may be made only through review by the planning board following the same procedure. So what it's saying is any change has to go to minor site plan unless the building, to be signed off by the mil, building inspector. Anything more than ten feet has to come back here to planning board.
I read it differently.
Do you read it differently?
I read it differently too.
Go ahead.
To me, this says that, um, so minor departures required by engineering or other circumstances not foreseen at the time of approval can go, can be approved by the building inspector if approved by site plan re...
Site plan review.
Right, which is, which is minor site plan.
Right.
Any change increasing the size of any building or structure, comma, changing the location of any building or parking or access road by more than ten feet. I'm, the way I read it is if you change the access road by more than ten feet, but any change to a location of a building would require a planning board. would require planning board. That's my interpretation.
I think the other piece of this is we, we're assuming that everybody agrees that moving two buildings within, how many buildings do you have there, 11?
11.
Moving two buildings out of 11 is minor. Maybe that's major. I mean, that seems to me that'd be the first, first question.
Yeah, but to peel that back, if we're moving two out of 11 by 6 inches or 3 feet, or we're moving all 11 by 6 inches or 3 feet, could move all 11 and say it's minor, 'cause it's just a few inches. Or if you move one by 100 feet, it could be major.
But that isn't what we want.
Is what you said, what you read, Mamie, does it still include that by more than 10 feet? Because if nothing is being moved by more than 10 feet, if it's moved 10 feet, that's not more than 10 feet. So if nothing is triggered by the more than 10 feet?
My, the way I read it-
The way I read it, it's if you change the access road by more than 10 feet. But any change increasing the size of any building or structure, or changing the location of any building requires planning board.
Regardless of how far.
Yeah.
So would-
That's how I read it.
Would, a minor site plan application to the town planner? And for any minor site plan application, if the town planner says, "I'm going to not vote in favor of this under minor," which automatically kicks it to the board. If she, when she gets that application, she declares that to you, to the applicant, and to the board. And the board agrees, which it sounds like we do, then she would put it on the agenda, and it would be handled by the planning board under the minor site plan?
No, major.
Under major.
Which is a lot more involved and more expanded.
Public hearing.
Public hearing and-
Yes.
More money.
I don't know. I'm reading it a little bit different. It says, I don't know why we'd have the building inspector involved with this if he's got nothing to do with it. I mean, why does it say the building inspector at all? You've gotta go, to me, it's just, it's the building inspector has the right for approval. It says, "Minor departures planned as approved are authorized by a building inspector." The site plan review committee? I don't know. I don't know why it would. I don't know. We're all reading it different. Put it on the master plan.
So what's your option, Jack? You just gonna leave it if you have to come to public hearing?
I can come, I can go to minor site plan, is what you're telling me, or I can go to major site plan.
Right, and major site plan's determined whether it's more than 10 feet or not.
Right.
But if, looking at this from an abutter standpoint, if I were in a abutter that was attending meetings, and we did have many attend many meetings, and the site plan is approved with a duplex in my backyard, and then two buildings show up without them ever knowing about it or ever hearing anything about it, I would be upset.
We're getting pretty late here. Yes, Tim?
I was just about to say essentially what she did. I think this has gone beyond the planner's report, which is what's on the agenda.
Right.
I hate to be a pain, but I, if I think of it from the point of view of an abutter, I think you've gone too far afield.
Well, we can't agree on what's minor departures with the building inspector. That's the bigger thing. And I didn't have a building inspector to talk to, so here I am. All right.
I did talk to the building inspector today. Introduced myself and told her that I would get back to her on what we discussed this evening, so that she would have more information, 'cause she's very new to the position and is, there are a lot of things she's handling right now. So she hasn't become familiar with this in the last two days.
I haven't had anything.
Okay.
I really didn't want to worry about my zoning book and say, "Hi, guess who I am."
I did explain it to her, though, so if you do go to talk to her, she would have some understanding, and she didn't have a plan readily available, so.
I'm going to talk to her.
Okay, Jack.
It sounds like-
Good discussion.
You don't have that big of a problem with it. It's just procedurally, how are we doing?
Procedure.
Okay.
But I think the board would have a problem with it if a neighbor or neighbors had a problem with it.
Yeah, I can, I can-
'Cause usually that's, you know, how we're guided. The neighbors are fine with what's proposed, and that helps us move along.
All right. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jack.
More on the planner's report?
Yes, quickly, I've contacted a potential recording secretary who's agreed to come on board, Kate Battles. I have a document, an agreement letter that I can show Dawn tomorrow.
I saw it.
You saw it. So I'd like to execute that with Kate Battles tomorrow and get her to start working on, to help us catch up on the meeting minutes. All right. 5G small cell has been, there's a placeholder on the warrant, but an attorney has, a specialist attorney has been engaged to take care of that.
And who's got the lead on 5G?
MTC. Board of Selectmen.
Who doesn't have the lead on it?
Planning board.
Planning or the town planner? But I did see the email, and it looks like the town administrator really gave an excellent update on what, where we are with that.
Yes. Do you need me to say any more on that?
Are we all set with 5G?
Yes.
Tim, did you have anything on 5G?
I was just gonna say, the last status from the MTC point of view was, it was one of the typical long discussions, you know, same discussion all over again. The primary issue has to do with the FCC putting in place a set of rules about when you can object on aesthetic grounds. I mean, you can't object on health or a whole bunch of others. And there's an argument that the deadline for that might be a couple of days from now to actually have a bylaw in place, which we obviously won't do. So the strong suggestion was to engage an attorney other than town council, one who's actually proficient in this particular area, and get him involved in sorting out what the options are. And given that the cable committee has a lawyer who practices in this general area, the plan was to engage him and see where we go from there. But it appears that we're late.
There's a policy that may be able to be implemented without having to go through an annual town meeting.
It's not clear to me that one can do that, but I'm not an attorney.
Yeah, but that was one of the topics, right, yeah. Okay. I forwarded an art, I forwarded the Attorney General's determination on Article One to planning board members for their information. I wanted to query the board on the next steps of open space monitoring, but we had in-depth discussion already. The public safety building sign, there's no motion on that, Andy, at this time. Nothing has been moved on. You asked at a prior meeting.
But Michael sent you an email?
Jason?
Jason sent you an email?
Malinowski sent me an email.
And it said what about the sign?
Next two months.
Oh, yeah, I was getting to that, one to two months. We should anticipate seeing something, movement on that. Contractor hasn't established some bid to put out as part of his agreement for the sign yet. So they haven't determined it yet. And that's it. We are working on meeting minutes. Nothing for this evening.
Back to the 5G. You, the town planner and I met with the town administrator and one of the selectmen, what, about two months ago? Month or so ago?
Yes.
And a commitment was made to do something. And that email that I, that you forwarded to me on the 5G was the something. It was, it's a thing that was addressed. A commitment was made to do something, and the something was done to a certain extent. People were updated, and it seems like the right steps are being taken. It's, it's just something to be noted that when, if there's an issue and it's brought to, you know, the higher-ups' attention, and a commitment is made to do something about it, that it actually got done. So I, it sounds, you know, the 5G might crash and burn at some point, but, or go nowhere, but at least the commitment that was made just recently was followed, followed through. Mr. Mills?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Any discussion? Any comments from the public?
Happy New Year to the planning board.
All in favor? We're adjourned.